Thank you. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. A meeting of the Salem Kaiser Public School Board of Directors is called to order. I just want to welcome our community. Those who are joining us, both from our state and out of state, and Oregon School Board Association who have been helping us and watch the meetings. And today especially, we have two members from the Oregon School Board Association who are joining us. Thank you. We really appreciate this. You keep us honest, transparent, and accountable. With that, I'm going to start with reading a land acknowledgement. Acknowledgement is critical in building the necessary trust to coexist in harmony with one another. Indigenous tribes and bands have been apparent on the lands of the Willamette Valley across Oregon and throughout Americas since time immemorial. In this valley, the ancestry of the Kalapuea reaches the furthest back in time, reminding us that this plentiful place has been called home by its original inhabitants long before the names of the snowy peaks and bountiful waters were re-identified. Today, we acknowledge that the people of this land still exist and inhabit this valley, not as heirs to it or artifacts, but as reciprocal contributors to the modern society we live in. We forward our respect to the first peoples of this land, the nine federally recognized tribes of Oregon and those who have ceded lands here. We reflect on the displacement, removal, and genocide of indigenous people that occurred throughout Oregon and beyond. In so doing, we truly honor the gravity of the past and endeavor to see that people may live in harmony and equity on this land for posterity. May this acknowledgement carry resonance as a tool of peace over the land and waters we mutually rely upon. Please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events. So, thank you. And as we celebrate the Native American Heritage Month, so we felt it was really important to read this land acknowledgement. With that, we'll proceed with the board attendance. I will call your names and please say presence here. So Vice Chair Daniel Bethel.
Present.
Thank you. Director Paul Kylo.
Present.
Director Blassey.
Present.
Thank you. Director Lippold.
Present.
Thank you. Director Hyun.
Here.
Director Ghos.
Present.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. There are no agenda modifications, as far as I know. And with that, we will proceed with the agenda for this evening. And the next is the spotlights on success. I'm going to request Superintendent Perry for take, you know, highlighting the spotlight for success. And I want to especially thank Cheryl Bennett, who has done a make up in translation services. So without you, we wouldn't be able to reach our community. So thank you very much. So Superintendent Perry, it's all yours.
All right. Good evening, Chair Chandragiri, members of the board. Our first spotlight tonight is presented by Principal Laura Tiffin from South Salem High School. And because our students are here as well, I'm wondering if maybe we want to put their faces on camera. And I know, I think they'll have to speak just for a second to get their faces up as she introduces the spotlight. Principal Tiffin, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you very much. And maybe Isha and Luke and Pranav, as I introduce you, maybe you can say hi? And then that will get you so that we can see your faces. So today, I am pleased to recognize Isha Purie, Luke Clifton, and Pranav Ramish.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Isha, did we hear from you?
Yeah, hello.
Oh, great. Excellent. Thank you very much. This year, these South Salem High School seniors founded a nonprofit to provide tutoring for students across the state. The program, Connect Oregon Students, is a free online service. And through the program, younger students are connected with upperclassmen who can help them with their work. Students in elementary, middle, and high school have access to this resource. The tutors can help with a wide range of topics, including math, science, history, English, Spanish, French, German, and many more topics. And each of those can be tailored to the student's grade level and ability. The trio began Connect Oregon Students when schools closed in the spring due to the global pandemic. And they themselves found it difficult to make the transition to online school and thought that maybe younger students would also be struggling. So their nonprofit began. And the program originally served only Salem Kaiser students, particularly from our local elementary schools. However, they have since expanded to serve students across the state and more recently into southwest Washington and northern California as well. In the fall of 2020, they also began two new campaigns along with continued tutoring. So those campaigns, Vigor for Vitality and Tougher Together, are designed to provide peer support to students in need. The two campaigns focus on promoting healthy eating and supporting students' mental health during these difficult times. They're even working with the United States Department of Education by doing a post for their reopening success blog with the idea that their tutoring is helping students stay ahead for when schools do reopen. So I am incredibly impressed by their dedication and their vision. They are providing a much-needed support and opportunities to our students in these very uncertain times. So Luke, Isha, and Pranav, you have an incredibly bright future ahead of you. And I'm so excited to see what you achieve next. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you, Principal Tiffin, and your three students. Really, just a reminder about how bright our future is in the hands of our young people. All right. So our next spotlight is going to be presented by our Director of Transportation Services, TJ Crockett. I don't know if you have officially met Mr. Crockett. He started with us, it feels like, three years ago, but I think it was June or July. And so he's taken on our Transportation Department as a director in the midst of a global pandemic. So TJ, welcome. And I know you're highlighting some things about your department. There might be some things I want to add if you don't get to them all. So I'm gonna let you go ahead. TJ?
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, members of the board. During the morning and afternoon hours of Tuesday, September 8th, the sky turned red and thick smoke from wildfires moved into the Willamette Valley. Ash dusted the hoods and roofs of cars and trucks. Families living in communities close to the wildfires were ordered to evacuate their homes. In total, wildfires that raged across Oregon in September destroyed more than 4,000 homes and burned more than 1 million acres. Tragically, nine people lost their lives. At the height of the wildfires, the weekend of September 12th and 13th, Governor Brown called on the National Guard to assist with firefighting. But there wasn't enough transportation available to get them in a position to battle the fires. The evacuation zones were only 15 miles from our school district, and many of our staff lived within those zones. That's when we were asked if we could lend a hand and transport the National Guard and school buses to the staging areas near the blazes. Our school bus drivers took three trips over a 48-hour period to make sure that the National Guard could help fight the fires and an additional four trips over the next two weeks in support of their operations. More than 20 Salem Kaiser bus drivers volunteered, with many more staff volunteering as support. By providing this assistance, which came with personal risk, the selflessness and dedication of the Salem Kaiser Public School Transportation Team is clearly on display. We are very proud of our bus drivers and support staff. From the bottom of our hearts, we wish to thank you all. Thank you.
I think I just want to go on to add, your team has just been incredible throughout all the things we've asked that are different than driving buses, including their delivery of lunches. Right now, I think we're at maybe 32 bus stops, something like that.
Yeah, we're, yeah, about 40 right now.
Okay. The number's gone up. And I've got a chance to watch them out at CTEC this last week as they were packing up the lunches and getting ready. And truly, it's kind of a really heartwarming thing to watch. So please pass on my appreciations and the appreciations from the board to the entire department.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And our final spotlight today is going to be presented by Cheryl Bennett, our Coordinator of Language Services. Cheryl, take it away. It's good to see you.
Fantastic. Thank you, and thank you for having me. Good evening, Chair Chandragiri, Board Directors, and Superintendent Perry. Tonight, I have the honor of sharing the spotlight on success for the Language Services Department, a department that supports the district and our families in so many ways. I do not want to take too much of your time, but I will present the team's accomplishments in Spanish first and then in English. Buenas noches, Presidente Chandragiri, miembros de la Mesa Directiva y Superintendent Perry. Mi nombre es Cheryl Bennett, y esta noche me complace reconocer el trabajo del Departamento de Servicios de Idiomas de las Escuelas Públicas de Salem Kaiser. Este equipo de quince integrantes trabaja para asegurarse de que el distrito escolar sea accesible para todos los estudiantes y las familias, independientemente de su idioma materna. Nuestro departamento trabaja para apoyar tanto al distrito mismo como a los maestros individuales. Ayuda a los educadores a comunicarse con familias que no saben inglés porque las barreras del idioma nunca deben impedir que las personas reciben información importante sobre sus estudiantes. Desde que comenzó el año escolar, hemos interpretado cientos de estas llamadas. El Departamento de Servicios de Idioma proporciona evaluaciones para los estudiantes que aprendan inglés. El equipo también ha interpretado 237 reuniones de IEP solo en este año escolar. El Departamento de Servicios de Idiomas ha colaborado con Capital Community Media y el Departamento de Comunicación del Distrito para transmitir en vivo las reuniones de la Mesa Directiva Escolar en español. Nuestro equipo ayuda tanto a los estudiantes que han estado en el distrito como los jóvenes recién llegados. En el año escolar 2020 a 2021 hasta ahora, hemos trabajado con 49 estudiantes que han inmigrado de fuera de los Estados Unidos y están asistiendo a las escuelas en nuestro distrito. Estos estudiantes proveen de una amplia gama de lugares y situaciones, y incluye a varios refugiados. Traducimos desde y a el español, árabe, ruso, swahili, marshallis, y chukis. Ayudamos a asegurar que todos los estudiantes y familias tengan sus necesidades lingüísticas apoyadas. Además de ayudar a los maestros, los estudiantes y sus padres del Departamento de Servicios de Idioma apoya al resto del personal del distrito. Traducimos cualquier comunicación que necesita el distrito. Esto es especialmente importante cuando el distrito envía anuncios importantes a las familias. A lo largo del COVID-19, el equipo ha estado trabajando incansablemente desde sus casas. La pandemia ha creado una demanda aún mayor de comunicación entre el distrito y las familias a medida que los planes continúan a cambiar. Esto significa que hay aún más trabajo para el Departamento de Servicios de Idioma, ya que el equipo se asegura que todas las familias obtengan la información necesaria de mantener una manera accesible. A pesar de la gran carga de trabajo, el equipo no ha desfallecido. Estoy muy orgullosa de arduo trabajo y la dedicación del Departamento de Servicios de Idioma. Ellos son equidad en acción. Gracias, equipo. Good evening, Chair Chandragiri, Board Directors, and Superintendent Perry. My name is Cheryl Bennett, and tonight I am pleased to recognize the work of the Salem Kaiser Public Schools Language Services Department. This team of 15 works to make sure the school district is accessible to all children and families, regardless of their home language. Our department works to support both the district itself and individual teachers. It helps educators communicate with families who do not know English because language barriers should never stop people from receiving important information about their student. Since the school year began, we have interpreted hundreds of these calls. Language Services provides English language learner assessments. The team has also interpreted 237 IEP meetings in this school year alone. Language Services has collaborated with Capital Community Media and the district's Communication Department to livestream the school board meeting in Spanish. Our team helps both students who have been in the district and newly arrived youth. In the 2021 school year so far, we have worked with 49 students who have immigrated from outside of the U.S. and are attending our schools here. These students come from a wide range of places and situations and include several refugees. We translate to and from Spanish, Arabic, Russian, Swahili, Marshallis, and Chukis. We help to ensure that all our students and families have their language needs supported. Along with assisting teachers and students and their parents, Language Services supports school district staff. We translate any communication the district needs. This is especially important when the district sends out important announcements to families. Throughout COVID-19, the team has worked tirelessly from home. That pandemic has created an even greater demand for communication between the district and families as plans continue to evolve. This means that there is even more work for Language Services as they make sure that all their families get the necessary information in an accessible way. Despite the heightened workload, the team has not faltered. I am so proud of Language Services' hard work and dedication. They are equity in action. Thank you very much.
And Cheryl, I just want to say one more thing too. I'm looking at this picture and I'm missing their faces. I've got so much time, you know, just in and out of the building with them. And I just, if they're listening or if, once you talk to them, please tell them just how much I miss seeing them in person. They've been hugely instrumental for us and always rise to the occasion for whatever we need last minute often. So huge appreciation.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry. And I will definitely share that message with them.
Ms. Bennett, on behalf of our board, I want to say thank you. It's so nice to see all of you. I mean, I miss that. When you walk in, I used to stop there and the place where they sign. So, thank you. And please, it means a lot for all of us. When our children have a way to communicate, the families have a way to communicate. You make that miracle happen. Thank you. You and your team.
Thank you very much for your kind words.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Perry. I think as far as the spotlight is concerned, right? So now we're going to the the public comments section. This section of the public comment is for items directly related to the board agenda only. We are having a very busy business meeting today because we will be spending some time with the Budget Committee selection. And so we're going to set aside about one half, 30 minutes total time for this section of the agenda item, public comments. Please restrict your public comment. Each person is allowed about three minutes to speak or comment provided in a language other than English. There will be an additional three minutes in order to help translate into that. So, and we would like to hear the public comment on agenda items only in this section. We're going to have a first reading of some of the changes that we have put in place, we're considering about the public comment process. That will be the first reading section. However, I ask, in a time like this, where as a nation we need to heal, that I ask that our public comments follow the following guidelines, that it be civil, respectful, and helps promote the healing. So needed in our country and in our community. So with that, we will start taking the phone calls for the public comment. Because of the time, we will post the video submission or any written submission in the website for the public. So Erin, or Ms. Daniel, would you like to please facilitate the public comment?
Sure. Thank you. Chairman Gary, Board Directors, Superintendent Perry. Erin, are we set to go?
Yeah, so I have our first caller on the line, Julissa. Let me just see if she can unmute and so, Julissa, you are live. If you may begin, please. Did unmute. I'm gonna get the next caller, just in case. So again, Julissa, if you are there, you may go ahead, state your name and begin.
Hello?
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Julissa Rodriguez. I'm a teacher in the district, and my comments will be discussing a few of the agenda items. First, on the public comment. Do you want to have a discussion about silencing constructive criticism of people in positions of power who have views that are harmful for people they serve, especially youth? It's not only a slap in the face of democracy, but it's also detrimental. We just gotta easily check a history book and see how every dictator has silenced voices they didn't like. Continuing, this proposed student advisor on the school board is performative, especially since the board has already kicked off youth from the Student Task Force for refusing to sign documents that are against their best interest. You've already been hearing from students for years, and especially all summer long on the SRO topic. Disappointment of a student advisor is just to look good on paper. Moving on, regarding about the Native American Proclamation. The proclamation discusses the Senate Bill 13's tribal history shared history. Listed on that bill discusses genocide. The district provided training uses a UN definition of genocide, which includes five inhumane actions that this country has practiced and continues to do via eyes and police to Native Americans. My focus will be on three and how the district is an agent to allow those acts to continue to happen to Native youth in our district by allowing police in schools. The UN article states, "On the present convention, genocide means any of the following acts committed with the intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethical, racial, or religious group, such as a killing members of the group. Native American and other BIPOC communities have a high rate of being killed by cops in comparison to their population. The numbers are not well-known due to the mislabeling of Native American's race, such as the district has done by saying that only 2,000 youth in our district are Native. Anyone whose ancestors did not cross an ocean to get to these lands is Native American, which includes myself, as well as many other youth that have been calling it." Continuing, another act of genocide is forcibly transferring children of one group to another. Native American youth suffer two of the most severe punishments the juvenile justice system can offer, which are one, out-of-home placements, and two, transfers to the adult system. The CDC found that the children who are transferred to the adult system have a 39% higher recidivism rate, which is a contributing factor to the high incarceration rate to Native youth. Additionally, in research done by the Lakota Law Project, Native American youth are only 1% of the national youth population but represent over 50% of the youth committed to the Federal Bureau of Prisons. Additionally, another act of genocide that the district has defined and that district is an agent of is causing serious bodily harm or mental harm. The Lakota Law Project found that Native American youths were significantly overrepresented in the use of horrible abuse, isolation, and use of restraints. We all know that the human brain does not fully mature until 25 years of age. The effects of isolation caused by being in jail or being sent to the hole, which happens a lot to youth inmates, has a lasting effect on the brain development. So like I say, your signatures on this proclamation mean nothing as long as you are unwilling to follow through when it says the board commits to ensuring a safe and welcoming environment to Native students. And again, this is a call for all board members with a colonizer mind, actions, and affiliations to resign from the board.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Yes, our next caller is Nayeli. So I'm just asking her to unmute. Now I'll go on to the next caller while we wait. Oh, Nayeli, are you there?
Yeah, hi.
Hey. You may begin, please go ahead and state your name.
Okay, thank you. My name is Nayeli Cruz, and I'm calling because I had some suggestions for the Budget Committee. I was really, I suggest hiring, or I mean, like recruiting Woman March Thanks, Carmen Tiemora Ordina, and Barbara Gabiela Gil. I think that they would really work with a budget with like equity and inclusion in mind. And they have a really strong amount of experience. And I would also like to say that Native American and Native American indigenous children are affected by the School to Prison Pipeline. And reading a land acknowledgement isn't enough to, I mean, provide what they need. So we need to remove the SROs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
We have Emily on the line. Just ask her to unmute. Emily?
Hello?
We can hear you, so you may go ahead, state your name and begin, please.
Hi, my name is Emily Lowberg, and I am a resident of the Northeast Neighbors Area of Salem and am an alumna of North Salem High School. I am calling today to comment on Agenda Item 4A, "Approve the Native American Heritage Month Proclamation." It is disingenuous for the Salem Kaiser School District to formally celebrate Native American heritage while actively implementing and supporting policies that harm Native American, indigenous, and other students of color, most notably the continued presence of student resource officers in the schools. SROs endanger the very students you are purporting to honor. SROs must be removed from Salem Kaiser schools to make them safe for all students. I also want to voice I also want to voice concern about the modifications to public comments. In order for true healing to be possible, community members must be allowed to name harms that are taking place. Not addressing those harms enables them to continue. I am concerned that this broad modification to public comment will be used to silence community members and take away their ability to speak about problems taking place in the community. I do not believe this modification is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Next caller is Angelique, so trying to get Angelique to unmute. Oh, we wait, I'll go ahead, move to the next caller. Roberto, if you could please unmute and
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, so Angelique, let's go with you first, and then we'll go with our next caller.
Okay, hello, my name is Angelique Crater, and I'm a recent graduate from the Salem Kaiser School District. I'm texting today about the Native American Heritage Month Proclamation. Indigenous people are three times more likely to be expelled from schools than white students and more likely to be arrested on school grounds than white students. We must prioritize the well-being of Black and Indigenous youth of color instead of policing them. Satya ran his campaign on the fundamental need to increase awareness and resources for students with mental health. However, he clearly does not care about our mental health when he stands against removal of school resource officers, otherwise known as SROs. The police, the presence of police in schools increases the levels of toxic toxic stress faced by Black and Brown students and students with disabilities, especially for students who have already had experiences with the criminal justice and immigration system. This specifically implies to the Indigenous youth in our district. The presence of police in schools increases in-school arrests for nonviolent offenses, which are most usually behavioral. How can you say that you want more mental health resources but do absolutely nothing for the Black Indigenous youth of color in our district? These are students who have specifically had traumatic experiences in school buildings alone, and even more so when you add the threat of SROs. The presence of policemen in public schools feeds the school to prison and school deportation pipeline. Why do you not care about the success of Black Indigenous students of color? Instead of giving our students the access to mental health resources that they need, you meet them with arrest and incarceration. The presence of police in our public schools puts the safety of many Black Indigenous students of color and students who live with behavioral disabilities at risk. How can you proclaim Native American Heritage Month but do absolutely nothing for the Indigenous youth in your district except meet them with trauma and arrest? When you do nothing but make schools feel unsafe for them, how are they able to succeed like their peers? Or what about when you kick Indigenous youth off of the student task force just because they refuse to stay silent about the oppressive ideas discussed at the meetings? Satya, tonight we are asking you to stand with students of color who are facing systemic policing in our schools. You failed to listen to them at previous schoolwork meetings, and you've even made efforts to sound us. Please advocate for the mental health of Black Indigenous students of color in your district and direct funds from SROs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Yeah, our next caller is Roberto.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay. Mi nombre es Roberto Gartes Meneses, y soy un miembro de la comunidad, y un recién graduado de la escuela en Salem Kaiser. Como un estudiante de color y también una persona indígena, ¿cómo pueden decir que son antirracistas cuando apoyan la policía que permanezca en la escuela y seguidamente daña a la gente de color, especialmente la gente indígena y afroamericana? Los estudiantes indígenas son discriminados cada día por su herencia, no solamente por la escuela, pero también por la policía. Se tiene el poder literal para decidir decidir el curso de la vida de un estudiante indígena que decide si el estudiante sea parte de la crimineralicia o se acaba en la prisión. Si verdad es realmente le importa el mes de reconocimiento para la gente indígena, yo como una persona indígena, te mando que saquen la policía para la seguridad literal de mis hermanos y hermanas indígenas y de color. Yo de mando que saquen la policía para que la trauma de los estudiantes de color se reconozca expecionalmente después de tanta política que sus voces sean escuchadas. Nunca es hora para celebrar cuando hay estudiantes que están discriminados y impresionados.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett, can you please translate that or?
Yes, sir, and just wanted to confirm that you can hear me.
Yeah.
Okay, hello, my name is Roberto. I am a graduate from the Salem Kaiser School. I am a student of color as well as an indigenous. I cannot believe that you're saying that you're anti-racist when you still support police in their schools. We are discriminated for our race in our schools as well as by the police. We are, they state that we are part of the criminal, of the criminality, and and recognize it as that. I demand that you take out the police from our schools and recognize the trauma that it is causing us, those of color and indigenous. We need our voice to be heard.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for translating. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Yeah, we're going to Luis, so I'm just trying to see if Luis can unmute. All right, and we also have Holly. Let's see if Holly is available. Okay, it looks like Luis. Yes, we can hear you.
Members of the school board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the school board and community members who are present, I want to start this testimony by addressing that at all the school board meetings that this board has held, this is the first time that the community because we have all started with the land acknowledgement. Regardless of the fact that Native American land acknowledgements should always be acknowledged and addressed at any and all events. Although it states on the Native American Proclamation that quote-unquote, "Our community is better because of diversity of our population", it doesn't make sense that there is little to no diversity on the school board that supports fifty percent students of color in this district. It also states that inclusion is at the core value of our district. But how can that be, but how can you be inclusive when you cut student testimonies off, undermine the experiences of BIPOC youth, and allow racist conservatives to continue serving on the school board? On a final note, it also states that Native American and Alaskan natives have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. I want to make it clear that these stories of tragedy and perseverance are stories that are a direct result of the damages due to white supremacy, systematic racism, and deeply rooted oppression that people in positions of power withhold. School board members, take a look at each and every one of yourselves. All of you are upholding these systems of abuse and ill treatment that have affected BIPOC students throughout the course of your school board campaigns. Do the right thing and abolish SROs. Satya, as a person of color, hold racist and white supremacists who are on the school board accountable. Do your job as the lead chair. Our communities will always stay resilient and resilient because it causes damage to all of us when colonization continues. That is all.
Right, thank you, Erin. Who is our next caller, please?
So we have Holly. Holly, if you can begin with stating your name and your public testimony.
Can you, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, please. Holly, could you say your first name, last name, and so that we can?
Hello, my name is Holly Oaf Miller. My partner, Gary Miller, and I live in Salem in Zone Seven. We've lived here since two thousand and four.
Thank you.
Can I give comments?
Yes, please, go ahead.
With respect to Agenda Item Six A, we approve, we oppose the attempt to avoid public critique of school board members. School board members are public servants who have a responsibility to listen to and respond to public criticism, something the additional language aims to disallow. With respect to Agenda Item Four A, which is to approve the Native American Heritage Month Proclamation, we support this. In this proclamation, it states that the school board has a responsibility to oppose the systematic racism towards Indigenous people in Oregon, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. It also states that the school board commits to creating successful educational outcomes and ensuring a safe and welcoming environment for our Native American, Alaskan, Native, and Indigenous students. It is completely hypocritical for the school board to approve this proclamation while they refuse to acknowledge the large segment of our students and concerned community members who have been calling for an end to the school to search contract with school resource officers. We've been calling for this for months. This is ample, there is ample evidence that SROs are part of the racist system that puts Black Brown and Indigenous youth on the school to prison pipeline, and there is no evidence that SROs keep anyone safer. It is unconscionable that Chair Shangri Deary, a mental health professional who professes to advocate for students' mental health, supports SROs in schools, which are known to be a huge source of trauma for our BIPOC students. As the chair of the school board, it is his responsibility to ensure that the school board does everything possible to keep all students safe from harm and trauma, especially our Brown, Black, and Indigenous youth. We demand that the school board and the school district live up to their own standards outlined in the proclamation and make evidence-based decisions that create equitable and safe schools for all students. End the racist SRO program now.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
So our next caller did not have cell access tonight, so they submitted an audio recording, and I was going to play that if that's
Well, that would be great. That would be good. Go ahead.
Please let me know if this doesn't come through. I think I'll have to do it through sharing my screen.
Hello, Salem Kaiser Public School Board. My name is Yonika Cuman. I'm a professor at Willamette University. I support Salem Kaiser's proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. As educators on Kailua Puyia lands, our task is to serve present and future Indigenous students and recognize, remember, and work to rectify the harms caused by educational institutions to Indigenous students in the past and in the present. Native students are three times more likely to be suspended and expelled from our schools than white students. As a college professor, I am fortunate to teach many young people. I notice the huge difference in experience between privileged white students who attend high-achieving suburban public school district schools, who rarely have police presence in their schools. Their experiences in education contrast profoundly with those students who go to schools with a school resource officer presence. They have a different experience. Police risk the safety of our students. The presence of police in schools increases stress for Native students, Native students, Black students, Latinx students, students with disabilities, and for others. The presence of police in schools increases arrests for nonviolent offenses. Police presence implicates schools and implicates educators in deportation and prison systems. As a college professor, I speak to many Salem Kaiser public school graduates about their negative experiences with police in Salem Kaiser public schools. However, I am well aware, and you should be too, that many Salem Kaiser public school students never make it to college classrooms, precisely because their K through twelve schools have not kept them safe, have not served them well, and have, or have swept them up into the school to prison pipeline. If this keeps me awake at night, I hope it keeps you awake at night. The difference is that you, as school board members, have the power to change this, and the decision is in your hands. Along with honoring Native American Heritage Month, I call on you to do all in your power to end the system of school resource officers and police in our Salem Kaiser public schools.
Thank you. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Yeah, our next caller is Cindy, so I'm seeing if Cindy can unmute and go ahead. Cindy, please be, begin with your first, last name and your comment.
Hello, my name is Cindy. Can you hear me?
Yes, Cindy, go ahead. Please tell us your first and last name and that way, and then go ahead with your comment, please.
Okay, my name is Cindy Gaitan. Today I'm here to touch base on the quote Native American Heritage Proclamation. But before I get into it, I want to recognize that we are all standing on stolen land, and you are all standing on a board and institution that is built on whose sole existence is only due to the racial capitalism and the oppression of those who were and have been colonized, especially the oppression of Black and Indigenous folks. First, I believe that if you would like to quote, promote closing the equity and attendance gaps for Indigenous folks through policies and practices that reflect the experience of Indigenous peoples and ensures greater access and opportunity and honor our country's Indigenous roots, then it is your duty and also a basic morality to recognize that Indigenous students are three times more likely than white students to be expelled or suspended, and that they are also more likely to be arrested within school grounds and/or be on probation for an in-school violation. I would also like to add that performative proclamations do not erase the harm that has and is being done. Direct action is the only way to achieve a true vision, and this includes reimagining what this oppressive school structures look like, which is why it is absolutely brutal to immediately prioritize the well-being of Indigenous and Black students of color, rather than continue to follow mindsets and policies that contribute to policing them. And the first step to do this is an immediate end to the SRO contract. It is time to invest those funds in ensuring student success and prioritizing, prioritizing, sorry, students of color, which this district has failed to do. Dr. Satya, it was you who said that you condemn racism back in July, and it was you who also said back in June that you are, quote, "Not for violence, but for a trauma-informed system." You have yet to practice this in an equity-based way, especially when the community in which you are supposed to serve is hurting and has been traumatized by not only you and this entire board, but the district as a whole. There are always many, many words to be said, but they hold no meaning when no action is taken. I would also like to add one quick thing in regards to public comments. Censoring folks while they're giving their testimony has been and continues to be an act of violence, and it is deeply troubling on behalf of this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Yeah, I believe it's Alondra. Let me just see if Alondra, are you on the line? Okay, are you Alondra? Or is this Alex? So I'm going to not hear any response.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, this is Alondra.
Okay, Alondra, would you like to share your first and last name and tell us, share your comment, please?
My name is Alondra, so I'm gonna start off with my speech. Hello, my name is Alondra Sanchez.
That was my mistake. I'm sorry.
Okay, Alondra, you had to go back again. Start all over, please.
I am very sorry.
Hello, my name is Alondra Sanchez. I'm a student at the Salem Kaiser School District. By funding policing and keeping the SROs in the school, you are supporting the system that kills Black and Brown people and pushes us towards the school to prison pipeline. Satya, you as a chairperson, you should know what to make the community better. But as I can see, you don't know anything. You need to work on listening and stop being But as I can see, you don't know anything. You need to work on listening and stop being performative. You need to dedicate yourself to uplifting voices of students of color and centering marginalized peoples. But I hope you change for the better.
Okay, and I believe.
Is she, is she still there or can I be missed?
I believe Alex is next, and I think they're calling from the same number. Alex, are you? Alex, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Alex, go ahead. Please share your first and last name and share your comments, please.
Hello, my name is Alex. I'm Alex Navarro. I'm a student in the Salem Kaiser School District. One thing you guys don't do is acknowledge the students of color. Dr. Satya M.D., it's pretty clear that you do not support or guide the BIPOC community. There is many problematic things that you have done while being head chair. We need a leader that can support and guide us, and you have shown that you're not capable to do so, capable to do so. Hope that you can prove us wrong and step up. As a doctor, we expect you to do better and have more agency to make decisions. Dr. Satya, you show that you don't listen to the community and you show that you're biased and corrupt. Dr. Satya, you've shown that, you should see the stress level and anxiety that us youth have by having SROs and SKSP or SKS or PS. SROs have a huge impact with the youth with disabilities. They don't know how to handle the youth. They don't even know how to handle the youth with PTSD that they have caused. There are facts, and there's personal experience. What, one thing y'all tend to do is saying the youth need to be open-minded, but the thing is that these are live experiences that white people, as white people, y'all could never, y'all should never be telling a person of color that they have opinions. But don't forget Marty Hain, Paul Kylo, and Kathy Goss need to resign. Marty Hain is for being in a group called Troopersenters, and Paul Kylo for doing blackface in the school board meeting, and Kathy Goss for being anti-poverty. And SROs need to be gone now.
All right, Erin, who is our next caller?
All right, so Colin, we have two callers left on the line who have signed up for agenda items. So Colin is next.
Colin, go ahead. Please share your first and last names, sir.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Wonderful. My name is Colin Cole. I'm a PhD candidate in education at OSU with a focus on language, equity, and educational policy, and I teach in the teacher preparation program. I have something written, but first I would just like to shout out everyone who has called in with testimony. This has been incredible. I'm starting to notice a pattern, which is everyone is calling for the removal of SROs. I hope that the board is listening, and it's not just performative, and that it's not so you can check a box and say that you've listened to the community, but I hope you're actually listening. I am calling in solidarity with the wonderful folks who have called in today. Salem youth, families, staff, and community members are demanding the removal of SROs from Salem Kaiser Schools. Don't just let us provide testimony, listen. I'm calling to support the Native American Heritage Month proclamation, and I ask that you all on the board recognize that it takes more than mere words to achieve justice and equity. Our actions must align. A land acknowledgement and proclamation are meaningful, yet they will not lead to the material change that our communities demand. We do not need performative acts. We need systemic change. One such change that is urgent and necessary is the removal of SROs from Salem Kaiser Schools. That aligns with point five of the proclamation of the responsibility to oppose systemic racism. It is negligent and dangerous to ignore the ways in which school resource officers' presence in schools negatively impacts students of color. The presence of police in schools increases the levels of toxic stress faced by Black, Brown, and Indigenous students and students with disabilities, especially for students who are already, who already have an experience with the criminal justice and immigration systems. You can see the work of Dr. Jeff Duncan Andrade if you are interested in learning more about the topic. His research is readily available. The presence of police in schools increases in-school arrests for nonviolent offenses, most of them being behavioral. The presence of police in our public schools feeds the school-to-prison and deportation pipeline, or what Dr. David Stovall calls the "school-prison nexus," highlighting how schools themselves are places where youth of color are constantly surveilled and policed. It's not just that schools prepare youth of color for prison or put them on that path, but they're often carceral themselves. The presence of police in our public schools puts at risk the safety of many Black, Indigenous, students of color, and students who live with behavioral disabilities. Director Satya, we ask that you push the rest of the board members to make the right decision and divest funds that go into hiring and placing SROs in the Salem Kaiser School District. We require that the school district then use these funds to reinvest in the education of BIPOC students, as stated in the original demands delivered to this board on January 9th. That was 306 days ago. Removing police from schools is the very beginning of ending systemic policing in our schools. We are expecting that as a doctor who cares about mental health, you do make the right decision in supporting the well-being of students of color and students living with disabilities. Lastly, on page 39 of the agenda, you provide the revision to policy 11, further policing language during public comment. Before you address what language makes you feel uncomfortable in these meetings, I ask that you center the experiences and needs of students of color in the district to ensure that they are not only safe and supported, but that they thrive, not policed and threatened. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Yep, our next caller is Sandra. Sandra is available to unmute.
Sandra, please go ahead.
Still waiting for a response. It looks like.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Sandra, go ahead, please.
Okay, great. Thank you. My name is Sandra Hernandez, and today I'm calling, and specifically I want to direct my testimony to Director and Board Chair Satya Chandra Giri. So for the past six months, you have been listening to student testimonies around the importance of removing SROs indefinitely from the Salem Kaiser School District. Yet you have failed at acknowledging and taking action on this ask from your students and community members. As a psychiatrist, I would hope that you understand the intergenerational and ongoing trauma that systemic policing has caused for students, especially for Black students, Indigenous students, immigrant students, and other students of color. I hope that you, Dr. Chandra Giri, or actually I want to know if you, Dr. Chandra Giri, how you feel about the fact that systemic policing primarily impacts students of color who live with behavioral disabilities? Do you think that policing is a remedy for supporting students who need additional support, especially around mental and educational support? My hope is that you understand the difference between prevention and reaction to fixing an existing issue. The SRO issue is both preventative and reactionary. The removal of SROs from Salem Kaiser School District prevents trauma for future students of color and students with disabilities. Imagine being Black or Brown in the Salem Kaiser School District and not knowing what it's like to have, you know, to face police. That's, that would be nice. That would have been nice for me. That would have been nice for my peers. And that would be really nice for the students that I work with right now. It also prevents further investment into the criminalization of students of color and students who live with behavioral disabilities. The removal of SROs prevents further trauma for students already dealing with the criminal justice system. The removal of SROs from the Salem Kaiser School District also helps fix an existing issue that has already affected hundreds of students in the district and thousands of students over the years. The mental, emotional, and physical safety of students should be prioritized. And while some of the board members have taken upon themselves to state that students feel safe with policing schools, there must be a factual and statistical approach to this statement, which would be proved completely inaccurate around the reality that students of color live with every day. The presence of policing schools has a real disproportionate negative impact on students of color, and they should not be overlooked by the imaginary feeling of safety that systemic policing has created for white students and white parents. I hope that you utilize your expertise as a psychiatrist to prove that you can trust or that we can trust your decision around the well-being of students. I hope that you remember how expensive our healthcare system is and how many students of color and students of low income and their families lack access to mental health services, and how much more important this makes fixing issues that prevent trauma in our school. So I hope that you really listen to what we have to say today, Dr. Chandra Giri, and we hope to hear an answer from you or some comments around today's testimonies. Thank you.
Sandra, thank you very much. I guess that was the last caller for the agenda items. And so one hour mark, before we go to the action items, I would like to know if we would take about a five-minute break, and then we can regroup. Is that all right? Thank you very much. We will get back at 7:06. Thank you. Welcome back. So it's 7:06. As we promised, we'll get to our next action item, some very important action items ahead of us. Superintendent Perry. So we're going to start with the 4A action items. Approval of the Native American Heritage Month proclamation. I'm going to request Superintendent Perry to provide us a brief update on the background, and she has some very important guests who are going to share with us. And then we will ask Director LePold to read the proclamation. Superintendent Perry.
All right. Good evening again. I do have at least one guest on tonight and then a couple videos. This is the Native American Heritage Month proclamation. And just as a point of clarification, we do have an Indian Education Office, and Gabriel sits on the Parent Advisory Council and is here to represent the council tonight, and he's one of our students at McKay High School. And so Gabriel, I'm just gonna turn it right over to you. We asked him the question, you know, if, what would you want your teachers to know about you? And so he might have other comments as well, but Gabriel, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and it's good to see you.
Tell.
Thank you.
Standing on Lee's lessons, Toluwai Danyi. Hello, everybody. My name is Gabriel Gerardo. I'm an enrolled tribal member of the Confederated Tribes of Selina, Indians, and a descendant of the Toluwai Danyi Nation in Northern California. So basically, I want teachers to understand that I am still here and that my culture is alive and thriving. I participate in many practices that my tribe continues to hold. We are gathers. We are hunters, and we are land protectors. It's not something that only existed hundreds of years ago. I shouldn't have to participate in activities that stereotype my people with teepees, feathers, and pilgrims, because that has been my experience thus far regarding my culture in the Salem Kaiser School District. I appreciate this opportunity to share who I am as a Native student within the Salem Kaiser School District. More importantly, I want to, I want teachers to understand that there is not one standard image of a Native student. All tribal students look different, have different tribal affiliations, and each differently represent their tribes and families. It helps us all if we can have an open dialogue if they have any questions or if I feel that my culture is being misrepresented. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gabriel, for coming and sharing. I appreciate. Superintendent Perry, you have any other guests who is going to share? You said you could be have parents and some.
We had a couple video submissions. Erin, is that correct?
Yeah. Would you like me to go ahead and play those now?
Yes, we're gonna watch the video first before reading the proclamation, Director LePold. That okay?
Of course.
Thank you.
Bujunichi, which means hello, my friends. My name is Natani Waller, and my native name is Benaseque, which means Thunder Woman. I am a member of the Grand Portage, Minnesota Ojibwe Tribe. I'm a student representative in the Indian Education Program, and I've been in the Salem Kaiser School District since the middle of seventh grade. During the time of being in the school district, the teachers don't always know the history behind Native. For example, just the other day, my sister's history teacher said that Columbus unintentionally harmed natives. The online schooling is a struggle for me and my five siblings because it's hard to get your questions answered, and communication is not that good. The tutoring meetings are just now getting up and going, and they make them too late for the students that work to attend and get help. Thank you.
Halito, this means hello in Choctaw. My name is Madison Cole. I'm a student representative of the Salem Kaiser Public Schools Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. I'm a member of the Choctaw Nation and have been in the Salem Kaiser Public School District since I was in the sixth grade. During my time in the school district, I've learned a lot, but I've also felt very nonexistent as a Native American. I've noticed in my school years that all other ethnicities seem to matter except for Native Americans. It's very disturbing to know the truth about Columbus and about Thanksgiving while sitting in class and listening to the history that is taught that is incorrect. When we do have lessons on Native history, it's super short, lasts a few days, and it typically is just very incorrect. Someday soon, I'd like to see the correct teachings of our history and the proper respect shown to our ancestors and their land. As a senior, it's been a very difficult year for many reasons, due to the isolation from friends and the lack of social interaction and no in-person teaching. It's extremely difficult to get your answers to the questions you may have or just what's going on in your class. Some students may learn just fine from distance learning, however, it is not the method that I would choose. I have a little hard time with it. But this is a year that the seniors look forward to because it's the year we get to celebrate our accomplishments and what we've worked towards throughout our whole entire school career. Events like homecoming and sports and prom, graduation activities, or just graduation itself are what we should be looking forward to. However, we don't know, like, they could have been canceled or we're just in doubt that they'll happen. If there's a positive from my time in the school district, I would have to say it's the friends I've made. I've had some great teachers and great experiences going to a public school after being in a private elementary school. My time as a student representative with the Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee has been very educational and very rewarding. I feel fortunate to be part of this group. I continue to hope America's first people will soon receive the recognition they deserve and that the district and all staff will learn the history and culture so all Native children feel welcome in their homelands. Yakoke, thank you for your time and for recognizing Native American Heritage Month.
Hello, my name is Leah Kierfey Sunset Wright, and I am from Clameth, Modock Tribe. And I wish that students and teachers would realize natives still exist. And I wish all people would respect us in our culture. I am very grateful for the Indian Ed program, and I absolutely love this summer school because I feel like I fit in, and I feel very comfortable and safe.
Oh, thank you, Superintendent Perry and all the students. That's beautiful. Oh, my God, that's amazing.
Yeah, I think they said it better than any of us could have said it. I'll make some comments at the end of the meeting tonight related to some tribal curriculum that's available through the state, and then I'm trying to help elevate through my position. So with that, I'll turn it over, back over to you.
Thank you very much. Director LePold, would you be kind enough to read the proclamation, Native American Heritage Month proclamation, please?
Sure. No, I would love to. But right before I do, I would just like to say something real quick. As a citizen of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde, and, you know, having a whole, my entire family being Native, you know, it's, you know, it's, a lot of people called in today, some of the students who spoke, I mean, it's been a tough path, you know, for our people, and I think that while it's easy to get into the mentality that, you know, the world's against you, because, I mean, a lot of times it has been. It has been for a lot of people. I believe that our school district is making leaps and bounds in the right direction for a lot of our students of color and also for Native, our Native American kids. I mean, I've seen, just since the time I've been here, it's gone from me feeling like I'm, my heritage is erased, right? When some local papers and Koi and whatever their news thing is, you know, refuses to recognize tribal members in their service, you know, to, to now, a lot of, some, a lot of our local papers are doing that. They're recognizing it. And our, we have a parent PAC, a Parent Action Committee, you know, that, that works hard to help make, build up our Native students, our Indian Education Department. They work every single day to ensure that we have our Indian Ed Summer Camp and a lot of our other programs. uh and a lot of our other programs to help build up indigenous students. Uh and, you know, huge shout out to Willamette University and thank you for letting us have, uh for hosting our Eagle Feather Graduation there last year. I mean, that was, that was huge for our students to be able to walk through a college campus, because a lot of natives here, I don't uh a lot of us don't go to college, you know, and then and a lot of it's prison for a lot of kids and that it can't be that way. We have to make changes. Um we're not gonna be there right away. It's a a lot of these, a lot of these things, things we have to work towards. And uh we're, we're just gonna keep moving forward, but when we do have the time, we have to take a time to look at what we've done, the progress we've made. You know, since nineteen eighty-three, when Ronald Reagan recognized, well, when our tribe was finally recognized out here, uh and some not till later. You know, till now, this is a huge progress. Um and so we can't, we can't ignore that. So I'm, that's why I'm I'm proud to be able to read this proclamation and I hope that we are committed towards uh serving and uh and building up our, our students, the students of color and and our Native American students. All right, here we go. Native American Heritage Month Proclamation. Whereas Salem Kaiser Public Schools recognizes that the indigenous peoples were the original occupants of lands that would later become known as the Americas. And whereas, as the first Americans, Native Americans and Alaska natives have helped shape the future of Oregon and the United States through every turn of our history. And whereas Salem Kaiser Public Schools Indian Education provides services for Native American and Alaska native students, such as tutoring, college and scholarship information, the Indian Education Graduation Celebration, monthly meetings for parents, and a culturally based academic summer program. And whereas nearly seventeen hundred kids, students in Salem Kaiser Public Schools identify as Alaska natives or Native American. And whereas we serve all native students and recognize their cultural heritage. And whereas Native Americans and Alaska natives have mu- moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. And whereas in twenty seventeen, the Oregon Legislature enacted Senate Bill thirteen, now known as Tribal History Shared History, for the implementation of curriculum about indigenous peoples. And Salem Kaiser Curriculum includes the nine essential understandings of Native Americans in Oregon. Since time immemorial, sovereignty, tribal government, life ways, treaties with the United States, genocide, federal policy and laws, language, identity, and history. And whereas, our community is better because of the diversity of our population. And whereas inclusion is a core value of our district. And the school board has a responsibility to oppose the systemic racism toward indigenous people in Oregon and the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. And whereas the school board promotes closing the equity and attendance gaps for Native Americans and Alaska natives through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous peoples. Ensure greater access and opportunity and honor our country's indigenous roots, history and contributions. And whereas the school board commits to creating successful educational outcomes and ensuring a safe and welcoming environment for our Native American, Alaska native, and indigenous students. Now, therefore, the Salem Kaiser Public School Board of Directors proclaims November twenty twenty to be Native American Heritage Month and encourages all members of our community to join in celebrating our Native American, Alaska native, and indigenous students. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Le Paul. Now, I want to note that it's a motion to approve the Native American Heritage Month Proclamation as it was read.
I move approval as a, uh for the proclamation as read.
Okay, who was that who seconded?
I think Danielle and I and Marty both kind of tied there.
Okay, so Marty, you get to, you are the seconded. This is. So Director Kylo approved the motion and Director Heinz seconded the motion to approve the Native American Heritage Month Proclamation as read. Now we'll open it up for discussion and if uh Dr. Udo Sanata, if you can move from this slide to I can see everybody, then we can open it up for discussion. Who would like to? Yes, Director Le Paul.
Oh, one, one thing I missed when I was, when I was sharing uh is, I mean, I'm a hundred percent with the people who are like, who talk about the land acknowledgements and some of these proclamations, right? Because so many times we see people uh use Native Americans as like a token to push their political gen- you know, to make themselves look good, same with any race really. And so I completely resonate with that. And so I agree that if we're going to approve this, you know, we have to truly commit to this. Uh like this is a big, a lot of big statements in here, you know, and in our commitment to serving Native American populations. So I just want to say that uh, you know, I agree with a lot of people called in saying that. And um I I hope that we are uh committed to what we're approving today.
Thank you, Director Le Paul. Anybody else? Any other discussion, please? Uh Director Blasi, go ahead, please.
Sorry. Um so, thank you. Um I, I wanted to acknowledge first the work that the district has done the last several years to really focus on closing the achievement gap for Native American students. But, you know, as we heard from our students tonight, you know, there's still more work to do so that they do feel recognized uh in the schools and they don't feel lost and marginalized. And, you know, and right now, we, we definitely are seeing the impacts, the disproportionate impacts to uh Native Americans across Oregon due to the pandemic. So it's just a, you know, and really, really unfortunate reminder about uh the impacts on health and behavioral health to Native Americans. But I'm, I'm proud of the work that the district has done. Uh but um it's, it's great to hear the students' voices because it reminds us that we still have more work to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Blasi. Uh Vice Chair Beto.
I just wanted to add that when I was a little girl, uh we used to be able to participate in intertribal powwows at our elementary schools. And it was a treat to, to be able to do that and to perform. And I hope that in the future, we can get back to that with our Indian Education Program, opening up our schools to bring our community in, to really teach um hands-on what it's like to be a Native American and specifically one of the nine tribes of Oregon. Um I know that those, those tribes have programs still today that go around and do exhibition um performances for schools to teach that, and I uh, I hope that we can get back to that.
Thank you. Director Kylo, you have something to add. Okay. Is there anybody else who has anything to share? All right. Hearing none, I'm gonna share something, you know. Thank you very much. It's just amazing. It's very nice that we were able to, and I had, you know, it's such an honor for me to read the land acknowledgement. You know, I come from India where we have a belief which I see some similarity with some of the native uh wisdom. That we believe that we are the continuation of our birth ancestors, land ancestors and spiritual ancestors. And the way we believe is we have to pay respect to all the ancestors who preceded us here. So I saw so much of semblance in the ancient wisdom and uh different tradition. And I was also struck by Lakota Indians tradition that the entire world is one family. That's one tradition they believe in. Just similar to an ancient Sanskrit uh saying that the whole world is Vasudevakutumbukum, the whole world is one family. So there is so much to learn. There's so much wisdom out there. And it is for all of us, whether we are at school board or we are in a policy or teachers, et cetera, just to get it to the surface. So that it's not only the Native American and indigenous students who are going to benefit, all of us are going to be benefiting and richer by making sure we are able to bring the ancient tradition and ancient wisdom to surface. That's probably going to give us the strength and courage and perhaps the way we can move forward from all the disasters and tragedies we are in the midst of it. They have survived through so many tragedies, so I'm sure there's so much wisdom and the way we can all incorporate and learn from that. So thank you very much. I hope at some stage we reach a point where all students feel they totally belong. Because some of this uh testimony that the video presentation is, how do you feel that you belong? And you start feeling very proud of your heritage and you're able to comfortably share that in public and feel you're, you're being a teacher and that's the wisdom. I hope we reach that aspirational goal someday. Now we are ready to take a vote and let's kind of go around and see the, the, we are going to vote on approving the Nat- Native American Heritage Month Proclamation as it was read. And Director moved the motion and Director Heinz was seconded the motion, calling names of each director. And will you please say how you would like to vote, Director Goss?
I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you.
My vote, aye.
Thank you. Director Kylo.
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair Beto.
Yes.
Director Le Paul.
Yes.
Director Blasi.
Aye.
Director Heinz.
Aye.
Thank you. And I also vote aye. So the motion passes unanimously with the so let's go to this four B action item. Just to approve the National Education Support Professionals Day Proclamation. Superintendent Perry, would you like to give us a brief update on this item?
All right, uh yes, uh November eighteenth is uh National Education Support Professionals Day. And this is your proclamation uh for the month. I just want to um say a huge um appreciation to our education support professionals um who have um been uh many of our essential workers in a pandemic. This um proclamation, I've made some modifications to in order to really um highlight what they have done for us. You heard a little bit tonight from our transportation officials. There are home coaches, there are uh office staff. There are custodians keeping our buildings clean, um and on and on and on, our instructional assistants. So um a huge uh debt of gratitude to our education support professionals. And Director Kylo might even have some additional words.
He might.
Director Kylo, go ahead.
Yes, uh I did, I did want to thank the superintendent for making those changes. I think they were highly appropriate. And uh this, this is a very hardworking and dedicated group. And I think that is reflected in the uh proclamation, which has been modified over the years. But this modification this year is highly appropriate. So whereas public schools are the backbone of our republic, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas education support professionals are integral part of the education process and whereas education support professionals manage offices, provide custodial and maintenance services, prepare healthy meals for our students, provide health and student services, keep our schools safe, drive our buses and support student in classrooms as instructional assistants. And whereas during the pandemic, our education support professionals have been steadfast in their commitment to our, to our students through Chromebook distribution, delivery of lunches, social distancing monitoring, home coach support, troubleshooting technology for students and families, and attending to the well-being of students through wellness checks, care, and connection. And our custodial staff are diligent in their efforts, efforts to keep our schools clean and safe. And whereas educational, education support professionals have stepped outside of their comfort zone and learned new technologies and performed different job skills. And whereas we know that the safety of our schools and our students and the academic engagement of our students could not be accomplished without our educational support professionals as our frontline staff, which has become more evident in this pandemic. And whereas more than forty-two thousand Salem Kaiser Public School students rely on education support professionals for registration, transportation, meals, health and safety. And whereas our district could not operate on any given day without over two thousand six hundred and sixty support professionals. And whereas educational support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. Now therefore, the Salem Kaiser Public School Board of Directors hereby proclaims Wednesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty as National Education Support Professionals Day. It urges that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of education support professionals in our schools.
Director Kylo, thank you very much. Thank you. Now is there a motion to approve the National Education Support Professionals Day Proclamation as read?
I would so move.
Okay, so who seconded?
I did.
You, Heinz, and Director Lippel. I keep tying people.
All right, this ti- this time it goes to the benefit of Director Lippel.
All right, that sounds fair.
Sorry, Marty. All right, uh so Director Kylo moved the motion and Director Le Paul seconded the motion and to approve the National Education Support Professionals Day Proclamation as read. Is there any discussion? Uh yeah. Le Paul, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to say um similar to the Native American one, you know, looking at this. You know, we owe so much to our, our community, does, you know, to our support professionals and our teachers and everyone uh within our schools. And so we couldn't do, our, our school district couldn't run without our support professionals, you know, and and, and so we are so grateful for them and their flexibility. It's been tough, a tough year, looking at uh taking on a lot more work, you know, um changing up through your schedule in order to be flexible. All, also that way we can serve students, you know, and I recognize that it's tough and and I mean, I wish we could do, uh give you the moon, but we can't. Uh but I hope that um this is a, a step forward to recognizing the work that you do. So, thank you guys.
Thank you, Dan. Uh Vice Chair Beto, go ahead.
So I just wanted to say an additional thank you. Uh just around the corner from my house, every school day, I have the privilege of saying hello through a wave or, or a good morning to these two lovely women who are providing lunch to my neighborhood kiddos. And there, this morning it was pouring down rain and they were standing outside the bus setting up. And maybe we could get them some pop-up tents just as the afterthought, but they want to be outside at, because the kiddos are coming up, they're interacting with these students. They don't want to be in the bus protected from the rain, handing these bags out from the back of the bus. And they always go above and beyond. They are they are truly our neighbors and I'm really grateful to just to see them, but to be able to have partnered with the other staff handing out Chromebooks. I'm sure many of them had knuckles that needed to recover from taking them out of the bins earlier this year. They just really are instrumental into the, into the daily connection that our students have in our district. And I couldn't be more grateful for them. And I'm proud that we, as a, as a board, um put this together and showcase them. But I hope that in more ways, we can say thank you to them on a regular basis.
All right. Is there any other uh comment? Director Kylo, you want to say something? No. All right. I just wanted to say thank you very much. You know, when a community was going through back-to-back-to-back disasters, what I call my quadruple disasters. Uh you know, this was the, you were the only- Uh, you know, this was the, you were the only hope we had. You were like the acts of compassion can go on, the list and list and list. You kept the community and our children safe and floating and we could get through this. You know, even though there's COVID and everything else, I feel so hopeful with, uh, you know, what I learned. It's such a humbling experience to see this. Even when we went to see a tour of empty building, which is, you know, the remodeling. See two staff standing there and trying to distribute the food and the kitchen going. And not just that, you're the only thing, a supporter for our children. And the only semblance of anything that was functioning in our community, the entire disaster system. So thank you very much. All of you are wonderful. And we acquired a lot from you. Oh, compassion and action, that's what, in action. So with that said, open it, uh, take it up for vote. And so the motion was moved by uh, the Kylo and seconded by, uh, Director Lippold, uh, to approve the National Edu- Education Support Professional Day proclamation as read. Let's go around and see how everybody votes. Director Goss.
Aye.
Thank you. Director Kylo.
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Director Blasi.
Aye.
Thank you. Director Lippold.
Aye.
Thank you. Director Hyun.
Aye.
Thank you. And I also vote aye. So the National Education Support Professional Day proclamation as read was approved unanimously. So let's go to the next item, four C. Approve revision to Board Governance Policy BG eleven to include the appointment of a student advisor to the school board. Director Lippold, would you like to kind of speak about this item?
Sure. Yeah, this is, uh, just similar to how we read it last time. Um, we're changing BG eleven to add a number twelve saying annually appoint a student advisor uh, to the board as a non-voting member. The student must have one year of experience on the district-led Student Equity Committee slash Student Advisory Committee. I mean, the background behind this, you know, kids and the younger generation a lot of times is less, left out of conversations in regards to education, really anything. But education is what we have control over as a school board. And this is a systemic way for us to give students a voice within, within our school district and, and have them be a part of the conversations that we're having. It's not perfect, right? But it's a, it's a good step forward to having the students, especially if they're on the Student Equity Committee um, for over a year. It shows that they're committed to the work. And, um, it's, it's a process, it's a structure we're already having set up with the Student Advisory Committee in this, uh, Equity Committee. So we're not rein- we're not reinventing a bunch of stuff. All we're doing is selecting one student from that Equity Committee to, um, to serve as a student advisor to the school board. And as far as, uh, last time, I had the request, uh, to come up with a policy specific for this. After speaking with other boards who have, uh, who do similar things, uh, none of them really had a policy set in stone. What they did is they just had something that said, they sent me like ways that they do it, but it's not in a policy, like they have structure, it's just not written in policy. And so, uh, this should be sufficient for us to do that. And then, um, by us approving this, it gives us the ability to start, uh, the work of insurance. You have it set up, uh, for, for the student member.
Thank you. Uh, is there any, uh, is there a m- motion to approve this or a revision to BG eleven to include appointment of a student advisor to the school board?
I make a motion to approve it. This is the end.
Thank you. Is there anybody seconded?
All seconded.
Okay. So Vice Chair Bethel. You'll open it up for discussion and Paul seconded, right? Thank you. Let's open it up for discussion of this, uh, motion. By, uh, Vice Chair Bethel and, uh, Director Kylo who seconded it. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
We'll come to, who raised the hand first, I missed.
I don't have my picture on, so.
All right. So we'll start with, uh, Director Hyun and then we'll go to Vice Chair Bethel, then we'll go to Director Blasi.
Thank you. I, I need to find the thing that does the hand raise on my laptop. Um, I guess my concern about this is I don't know what that looks like when it's all laid out. And I would almost rather see how that role would actually interact and the rules around that before I would be in favor of it. So at this point, I abst- I'm going to abstain because I'm not really against it. I just don't know what that's going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Bethel, and then we'll go to Director Blasi.
It just occurred to me when I was reading through the second paragraph again, where it says the district has a long history of students from each high school being a part of the district-level high school student advisory committee. And I was just curious if Barbara Roberts High School, um, is allowed to participate or, uh, asked to participate in that, those conversations and if they would be eligible to be on this student advisory committee if they wanted to be.
So Superintendent Perry, would you like to?
Uh, yes, and we've had, um, students from early college. And so it's a little tricky because there's so many different programs. Um, but yes, and I don't know if Ethan, you have any specifics from how we're setting them up for this year or not?
I know it's important for us to get representation from every school. In that Cynthia Richardson, uh, working through our Office of Equity Advancement and Achievement, uh, and Access, uh, is is recruiting students from each school. So I think we, we should have some from Roberts.
Thank you. Director Blasi.
Thank you. Um, so like Marty, I, I have I still have several questions and I thought we were going to get some of those questions answered before we voted. Uh, but I would, I would be okay if, uh, maybe there was, I, I don't want to say amendment, but language added that, uh, the board will have an opportunity to look at the setup of this. Because some things I think we were going to be, um, getting clarification around were like, how would a student be selected? Uh, so we know what the requirement is, but, you know, do they apply and does the board vote? How, you know, the, going back to the cross-representational across the district. Um, you know, would it rotate from school to school each year? Um, and then, but more importantly, I think, how would they actually advise us? Um, you know, do they participate in school board meetings and feel as though they can speak up? I'm just not really sure, you know, how would we empower a, you know, and, you know, a sixteen or seventeen-year-old to um, to find their voice and to be able to speak up to a board, um, especially around issues around equity and things like that. Um, so I'm, I'm kind of curious how that would look. And, um, so, yeah, so I, I think I still have some questions because I want to make sure that they're set up for success and it's not just, hey, look what we did, uh, type thing. I, I want these students to actually be successful and that the board actually gets some benefit from it. Um, you know, to hear that student voice, so.
Is there any other discussion on this topic? And we'll go to you, Director Lippold. I just want to know if there's any other question you can answer together. Uh, Director Goss, you have any questions on this?
I think that, that it's used frequently and
I, I have clarification.
You're done mute again.
Uh, Chair Shonda Gary, I have clarification for Director Bethel. Um, so we, we do have representation from, um, Barbara Roberts High School.
Thank you.
Okay. As I was saying, I think it does, it is used throughout. And of course, it gives a little weight to not just that student, but the student they talk to and, uh, the opportunity that they have to present themselves. And I think it's a good idea. I think we should do it. But I think that, um, when we select that student or the students, whatever, however that process works, uh, we need to be careful, I think.
Oh, Director Goss, you've got, you're done mute again. Yeah.
Okay. As I was expressing, the fact that, that yes, I think it helps students feel the fact that, that, that they're appreciated and they get to be a part of decision. Well, not necessarily decisions, but input on the topic, whatever it is that affects them. I think we should go ahead and do it. And I think it's up to us to make sure we have someone to make sure that we, not assure, we ensure that person's success. And I think we can do that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dacopoulos, you have something to add, then we'll go to Director Lippold to kind of sum up.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that in, in, for, for some of the school districts that I've reviewed, on this topic, they, they have an operational guide um, that spells out some of these, these questions. And, uh, we can work on, uh, the format for that and the, and the board could take a look at it.
Thank you very much. Director Lippold, can I add something before you answer all of our concerns together?
Sure.
Yeah. I, I really think this is a great idea. The future of our republic depends on what kind of pipeline of leadership we develop. You know, in today's world, I think ability to kind of look from different perspective, not as one point of view is very much needed, in my opinion. Kind of look at issues or policies or resource allocation, et cetera, from different vantage point of view. To me, we are in the business of building pipelines. And to me, you know, when advocacy happens, there's a lot of emotion attached to an issue. But when you have to translate that emotion into policy building and resource allocation and then trying to negotiate with different you know, unintended consequences of resources, that's perhaps the greatest gift they would get. This will also become an opportunity for them to have mentorship on leadership. To me, that is a amazing thing. So I really think this is a great opportunity for our we are in the business of building pipelines for future leaders. That's how I look at it. And, uh, perhaps, you know, even our board should have had board, you know, orientation for new freshman board members. Somehow we missed that. But perhaps we could build in something like that or, uh, you know, or, uh, and as, uh, Mr. Dacopoulos said, we can put that into the operational guide of how it will be rolled out. But to me, it's an amazing opportunity and it's a great way to build agency in some communities who really struggle. You know, sometimes we have those photographs which talks about tall ladder, small ladder, middle-sized ladder. But the greatest thing is to climb those ladder. It doesn't matter how tall it is, right? And that's where the agency is really, really important. A lot of people become self-conscious. And even if you give them opportunity, that it, it holds us back from inside. So Director Lippold, I really think you bring a good idea. And we need future leaders who are able to take different perspective and not just look at everything one way or the other way around or one against the other. So to me, thank you for coming up with this idea. We can just find a way to operationalize it and make success. And if they succeed, it, we have a guaranteed leader forever. So Director Lippold, you want to answer all the questions people brought up?
Sure. Uh, I mean, one thing is, I, I think it's important for us to, um, not be afraid of change and things that are, that are new and we haven't done it before. And so there's going to be stuff along the way. There's going to be questions that come up. There's going to be, uh, logistical things that nobody's thought of. There's, it, there's going to be things along the way. But we can't let, we can't plan for every single bump in the road. We have to move the car forward, you know? And we, uh, and, and if we're talking about equity, this is a way to do it. It's a, it's a way, and we get as much as we get out of it as, as we're willing to. You know, if, if we're talking about, how do we benefit? And how, we, what we should also be thinking of is how do these students benefit, right? Because, uh, this is a person who, all these kids within the Student Equity Committee and these kids from the Student Advisory Committee, and every single student this kid touches or is around, you know, and all of our schools that are about two thousand kids each. Uh, you know, this is a person to where kids can go to have more of a say in the boardroom. Now, one thing, like, I'm young, but I'm not in the schools right this second, right? One day I'm not going to be on, on here. One day I'll be a crusty old fart and uh, you know, and they're going to be, there's going to have to be other kids and, uh, or I might not even be on the board, you know? And so it's important, I think, to have it be a systemic thing within our system to ensure that kids are being heard. Um, and it's up to us to ensure that we respect that student, um, that we give them a voice. Uh, we ask them questions, just like we do with Paul and Christie and each other. You know, when we have questions about something going on in school, we can ask them, you know? And so, uh, that's something that each of us, as a person and as a leader, uh, leaders of our community, we're going to have to work hard to do. Now, of course, like, they can't go in executive sessions, right? Because that's their peers. And there could be legal repercussions, right? And those are things that we're going to have to deal with, within the operational, uh, guidelines that each district has. What this does is this allows us, this, um, sets it in stone and says, okay, now we can work on these operational guidelines. So those are things we're going to work out. Um, but we can't let, uh, the unknown make us afraid of moving forward on this. If we believe that having a student, uh, from the Student Equity Committee, or at least a student on our board would be helpful um, and would show equity, you know, would be a movement towards, uh, lifting up student voice, then you should vote yes. And then we'll work, we're going to work out the details. Um, you can't let, you know, the icing on the cake stop you from, you, you, we don't know what color the icing on the cake is going to be, stop you from making the cake. Uh, we have to move forward. And so I would urge you to vote yes. And I'm excited to see, um, to see this come to fruition.
Director Lippold, thank you. This is a very nice, uh, you know, motion, uh, you know, this, uh, it's a very nice idea that you bring to our board. I really think when people talk about sixteen years voting, which is important, right? So we need to also have sixteen years old being there in this process of participatory government. And so this is a great experience and this is the best thing. So let's kind of, so the motion to approve this. So was it, uh, Director Kylo, you moved the motion, right? And and Director Bethel who seconded the motion. So the motion, and this is to re- approve the revision of Board Governance Policy eleven, BG eleven to include appointment of a student advisor to the school board. So now it's, let's open it up for the vote and let's kind of go around. Director Goss, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Hyun.
I'm sorry. I, I'm feeling a little manipulated here, but, uh, no, I'm going to continue with my abstain because I, I'm a data person and I just don't have enough information at this, this time. Uh, I'm, this is going to pass and I hope it's successful.
Okay, Director Lippold, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Okay. Director Blasi.
Yes.
Thank you. Director Kylo. Vice Chair Bethel.
Yes.
And I also vote Satya Chandragiri vote aye. So Director Hyun abstains and all others vote aye. And hence the motion passes. To approve revision to Board Governance Policy eleven to include appointment of a student advisor to the school board. So now it is seven fifty-five in my clock. And could we take a five-minute stretching break? And then we'll come down to a very important item. So don't go home. All of you watching, please be there. This is appointment of community members to the Budget Committee. So we'll take a five-minute break. And we'll regroup at eight o'clock. Thank you. The appointment of community members to the Budget Committee. Now, as we, we all have been given a ballot. Board directors have been given a ballot. And you have to have some kind of marker or some kind of ticking. And you have to show on the screen so that Mr. Takopoulos can count the boards. So I'm going to call on the Bud, the Budget Committee candidates. We'll, and we'll ask you to share a statement. And I'll ask Vice Chair Bethel to help me for those for technical reasons or some other reason they are not able to connect with us. And to read their statement which has been submitted by them. We hope we get to see and hear from all who have submitted. And we had asked them a question, how will you advocate for all students as part of the Budget Committee? So I'm going to go through the list in this order. Start with Ms. Barbara Guio. And Ms. Barbara Guio. Dr. Udo Sinata or Erin, are you going to help us connect?
I'm here.
They should be there.
Yeah, there you are.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay.
Just have us, there we go. All right.
Yeah, there you go. This is better for us.
Barbara.
All right. Good, good evening, everybody. As you know, my name is Barbara Guio. I live in South Salem with my three kiddos and my husband. We're raising our children bilingual, bicultural. I'm originally from Argentina. And I became a US citizen in 2006, just, just a little bit before I became a lawyer. I graduated from Willamette, I'm undergrad from Linfield. So I did my whole education in this area. And I, I'm very happy to be here tonight. I saw a whole bunch of candidates that seemed terrific. So I think you have an easy job here tonight because you're going to get somebody to be able to help with their expertise and their knowledge. So a little more about me, I submitted a statement, but I'll just read it out loud. I came to the United States when I was 10 years old. And my parents enrolled us in a school that was not equipped to deal with kids who didn't speak English. My grade school teacher didn't know what to do with me. So she put me in the back of the classroom to do ABCs literally for weeks at a time. And I couldn't communicate with her or my classmates. I remember getting an F on my math test, the only subject with an international language because I put commas instead of points like we do in Latin America. That was devastating, but that showed the lack of understanding and cultural sensitivity. Obviously, with time, I learned English by trial and error. To give an example, I remember sitting in class wanting to go to the restroom. A few words I could possibly say is, can I go to the bathroom? And, and the teacher would refuse me until I learned to hear, may I? So I can't even explain to you how it makes a child feel when they're being ignored. But I learned the hard way. I will never forget what it feels to be forgotten, lost, alone and ignored. As a lawyer, I strive to listen carefully, gather evidence, do research, evaluate and make conclusions. Part of gathering evidence and doing research is listening to other people's perspectives and their stories. I plan to be open to the needs of all students in Salem Kaiser so that they are heard, valued, encouraged and to reach their full potential. The truth is that without financial support, some excellent ideas and programs can begin or continue. The Budget Committee has this duty to allocate funds that reflect the demographics of the district and fund programs for students notwithstanding their race, origin, native tongue or economic background. Part of this is also support having teachers, administrators and staff who are diverse in experience and education, including training. I, I'm a passport member of CAUSA, the Salem Kaiser Coalition of Equality. I volunteer for Mano a Mano, participated for years in a SMART program, helping children read in Grant Elementary. I also volunteer in the kids' classroom for several years now on a weekly basis. And I am also the popcorn lady at my school. So I really, I really take this to heart. I, I, like I said, have three kids. I think it's important to be involved. This is a very American value, community service. And I've always been very proud of my community service. I have time now, because my kids are a little bit older, to be able to reach out and, and put my name down for something as important as the Budget Committee. I value diversity, inclusion and equality. I believe that it's important to share children to be compassionate and allies to their classmates. As a parent, I believe a school should be a safe place for children, but also a place that opens their eyes to opportunities. Parents and advocates know what is best for their children, as I know what's best for mine. But also, it is important to hear from the students themselves. And we heard it today. And I really love that about what we heard today in the past two hours. I will, I will welcome parents, advocates and students to reach out to the Budget Committee with their ideas and needs to best serve all of those who are in Salem Kaiser. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Guio. Now, can I request Riley Harrigan to join us and share?
Hi, can you guys see me okay?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay, so my name's Riley Harrigan. I live in South Salem. I have three girls. Two of them are in high school and one's in elementary school. My perspective on how I would advocate for all students on the Budget Committee, what I feel I bring to the, would bring to the committee as a systems-minded approach to thinking through the ramifications of a decision. And where appropriate, seeking the experience and feedback of the affected student groups. I would depend upon the efforts and experience of the professionals working at the district, making the, the budgets, putting them together. So I'm not volunteering under some delusion that I'm going to revolutionize the budget. But I do want to demonstrate serving others. I want to learn more about school operations. I want to be an advocate for those kids that need opportunities and avenues for advancement, helping to give opportunities, providing resources, removing barriers and making sure to understand the impacts intended and unintended as much as possible of the decisions and changes that are made to the budget. It's my firm belief that school needs to be a positive place for all the kids to come for learning and to be prepared for the future. So if chosen, when we're looking through the budget as proposed by the superintendent, I'd be advocating for data and metrics applied to those changes so that we can know a change can be impactful and will later know whether the change has been a success. Thanks. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Harrigan. I really appreciate. Can I call for Ms. Lisa Harnish, please? Ms. Lisa Harnish, please. Lisa, are you there? So Vice Chair Bethel, do you mind reading Ms. Harnish's statement?
I don't, and I apologize.
Lisa is coming and going. I don't know whether she's there or she's not there.
Said to Alice that she was having technology issues. And she sent an email and I have her statement, so.
Okay, okay.
If that's okay.
Go ahead.
Popped out. So it says, good, good evening. My name is Lisa Harnish and I am an active community member, a parent of two former students who attended Salem Kaiser Schools and a strong advocate for the district. As a member of the Budget Committee, I would work hard to advocate on behalf of all children as part of the budget planning process. A budget is a key and critical piece of any organization. It is the vehicle by which an organization can articulate its vision and mission. It is a demonstration to staff and the community on where the priorities lie. The district has the vision that all students graduate and are prepared for successful life. This becomes the overreaching goal of the budget process to allocate resources to best meet this vision. As part of the Budget Committee, I will advocate that we actively listen to students, families, community partners and staff to align resources to meet the current needs of children to assure that they have the opportunity to achieve educational excellence. To be able to truly focus on all children. Oh, she's back. I see your cheese popped in the comments. Lisa, do you want to carry on?
Lisa, we want to see you and hear from you as well. There you are.
You're just fine, Director.
You can start all over again. You can start all over again. Uh-oh.
Oh, she froze. I'll finish her statement and then if you, if she wants to pop in, how's that?
Okay.
It says, to be able to, to be able to truly focus on all children, attention must be paid to the needs of children and families furthest from opportunity, whether that be race, language.
You are.
Well, we're going to ask Vice Chair Bethel to complete your statement. And then Lisa, you can pop in. Because you, yeah, go ahead, Danielle.
Okay. I'm going to start that paragraph over again. To be able to truly focus on all children, attention must be paid to the needs of children and families furthest from opportunity, whether that be race, language, medical needs, learning needs, mental health needs or instructional needs. All children have the right to an education that will support them in their achievement of being prepared for a successful life. Our committee, excuse me, our community has a lot of differing needs, especially now. There are many external constraints, the pandemic, forest fires, racial tensions and an uncertain economy, just to name a few, that the Budget Committee, along with staff and the Board of Directors, will have to balance. I will do my part to listen and seek to maximize and leverage resources so that our educators and district as a whole are supported to do the heroic work they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bethel. Lisa, if you are able to join us, we want to at least say hello to you.
Hello, everybody. I am back. I'm not going to turn my camera on just in case. But thank you again, Director Bethel, for reading my statement. Thank you.
All right. I hope your bandwidth improves and we can see you again. All right. So let's go to Ms. Wilma Marshbanks, please. Ms. Marshbanks. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wilma Marshbanks. I am a mother of seven children who have all been former students of SK 12. And November 6, I became a grandmother of 16, who are on track to be SK 12 students as well. And so I have been asked to make a brief statement in answer to the following question, how will you advocate for all students as part of the Budget Committee? And as an advocate for all students, I will work to ensure that the distribution of funds is allocated through an equity lens as it relates to the budgeting committee. I hope to amplify the voices that have historically been unheard and silenced in this process. My lived experience will provide a unique perspective to the implementation of budget planning. I will actively support the SK 12 Equity Lens statement that is designed to ensure decisions are made that provide for each student's needs so that the district's vision can be realized. I bring clarity of intention, commitment to action and an empowered voice to equity and equality for all students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I really appreciate. Mr. James Parr, please.
Hello. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Appreciate the time this evening. Well, good evening. My name is James Parr. Professionally, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Salem Health Hospitals and Clinics here in Salem. Personally, though, I'm the father to Cali, a freshman at West Salem High School, and Jack, sixth grader at Stroop Midest Middle School. I have lived here in Salem for 13 years. According to the job description, it's the role of the Budget Committee to receive the proposed budget, provide the public with an opportunity to comment and to determine the reasonableness of the proposed budget in meeting the priorities and goals of the district as set forth by you, the school board. Because of my background in finance and accounting, I believe I'm adequately qualified to review and understand that subject matter. As a parent and community member, I intend to uphold my commitment to representing all students in the following three ways. First, to be an active listener. Second, to seek to understand. And third, to view proposals and decisions through an equity lens, being deliberately inclusive of underserved and marginalized groups and striving to ensure all voices and viewpoints, especially those that are historically underrepresented, are included as decisions about the budget are made. I believe transparency and accountability are values this committee should uphold and I commit to these values if I'm selected for the committee. I don't deceive myself by thinking that the work will be easy or that our decisions will please everyone, but I am excited to engage at a higher level with my community. I will work to identify and remove barriers as well as to pursue creative solutions to problems. And finally, once again, I appreciate the opportunity to apply for this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parr. Can we hear from Mr. Mark Simpson, please? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Directors and Superintendent Perry and all others. My name is Mark Simpson. I live in West Salem. I've been in Oregon for about three and a half years with my family. And thank you for considering me for a position with the Budget Committee. I wanted to start by saying that I'm struck by the quality and experience of this group of community members being considered for the Budget Community or Committee. What an exceptional group of people. I'm really impressed and astounded with the, with the quality of this group. As I considered the question, how I would advocate for all students as part of the Budget Committee, I considered the reasons that I included on my application for the position and the reasons that I think that I could be a benefit to that committee. Things like, I'm the father of three current and one former SKPS students. My children participate in sports, music, academic programs and other extracurricular activities. My children are biracial and the children of an immigrant mother. My family is a multi-generational family living in one home. I speak Spanish and have lived for a few years outside of the United States in my employment as a community and migrant health center, in a community and migrant health center here in Salem. I work with families from many backgrounds and many situations. I serve in our community on various boards, committees, advisory groups and et cetera. And I'm passionate about equity and opportunity and student success. But as I, I considered these things, I kept coming back to the thought that no one person can have the knowledge and experience to adequately represent all of the vast diversity of students in this large school district. So, and this is a common theme among everyone who's spoken tonight. What I'll say is this, that along with the knowledge and experience that I think I could bring to this committee, I would advocate for all students by listening and hearing, by being open-minded and open to learning and by prioritizing understanding. Our students and our community deserve resources that ensure that all children have the opportunity to achieve academic success. And I really appreciate this opportunity to address you today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simpson. Now, can we hear from Ms. Carmen Urbina, please?
Buenas noches. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Buenas noches. First of all, I need to bring into the room my father, my ancestors, my father and my mother, Roberto Urbina Felicitas Carillas. My mom finished third grade. My dad finished fifth grade. I'm from Honduras. And in, and I want to, first of all, I want to thank the Chair of the Board of Superintendent, the Board, the Superintendent Perry for the opportunity to speak to all of you today. In addressing the essential question, how will I advocate for all students as part of the Budget Committee? I have to share my stance. First, I would be asking myself, who am I in relationship to the students and the communities that we are serving in the skin that I'm in as a proud brown immigrant Latina indigenous woman? I would be approaching this role with responsibility, vulnerability, humility, curiosity, respect and integrity. Second, the concept of community is very interesting because we see community as a monolithic entity. When in reality, a community is formed of multiple communities that in a general space, these multiple communities might not have any connection with each other. And in a school district, in a school building and currently in a virtual space, these multiple communities come together and they can collide or thrive, specifically in the time of the clock of the world where we are moving through a global pandemic, fires and racial unrest. Therefore, I believe it is our responsibility to create spaces and conditions where our communities can come and thrive, thrive instead of colliding. Third, there's a fine balance between equality and equity. And in a budget process, I believe both are needed. Equality creates, which is a foundational piece, which everybody needs foundational funding in order to do the work of schools as a technical aspect. And then there's the equity lens, which I define as the lens that allows us to see who are the students. which I define as the lens that allows us to see who are the students and the communities that our system is not serving. And I'm gonna highlight the system is not serving. In summary, if I'm selected to join the Budget Committee, I will advocate for all students by bringing my parents as a Latina indigenous woman that came to the United States undocumented with my mom and father and was deported in fifth grade back to Honduras and came on a full ride scholarship to Oregon State University, who has 35 years of budgeted financial and school knowledge. I will be curious and humble in understanding the extremely diverse, complex, and beautiful community that represents six different regions that form Salem Kaiser Public Schools. And I will bring an equity lens, a racial equity lens, racial equity lens, and an anti-assist lens that will allow me to see the need every single one of our students. If I'm selected, I will bring integrity as we steward the budget for the greater good of each and every single one of our amazing and beautiful students. Much gratitude and appreciation to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Amazing. I wish we could hold all of them. We could just take all of them. Can't we expand the number of Budget Committee slots? I hope we can. And well, Mr. Decapulis said no. So I'm gonna hand it over to...
The statute, the local budget law provides that you have to have an equal number of board members with public members. So that's, we're kind of stuck with that for now.
No, nobody's about the law and I don't want to break a law to change, fix the problem, right?
So everyone has...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could I just say something really quick before we start with this?
Yes.
Process? I just wanted to personally thank everybody that applied. Every single candidate is qualified. I just disagree with one statement. And the statement was that it should be easy to pick because everybody's so qualified. And actually, that's what makes it so hard is because there are so many qualified people. Who to select is very difficult. Anyway, I appreciate, appreciate every single one of you and thank you very much.
So the, Chairman Shandrigiri has explained a little bit about the ballot. You have a, a copy, a paper copy of that. And in round one, you're to vote for three. Director Hyen has informed me that she's unable to access the video on her laptop. And so I'm going to have her text me her votes. And I will announce her votes first so that I have them. And then I will go one by one for everyone. So the first...
Mr. Decapulis? Is there a show of hand to see if that process is acceptable by the remaining board? I don't want a technical question come up. Just say, is it okay to have that little bit modification because of the technical glitch? The camera doesn't work? Any objection or those to that process modification?
Yeah.
So I, I don't have any objection whatsoever. But Mr. Decapulis, if they can pack the United States Supreme Court, surely we can find room for four more Budget Committee members. I've never seen a better group than this. They really are spectacular.
Amazing. Thank you.
They've been really, really something. They're focused on what we want right now and where we're going, what we're doing. And it's just great. I'm gonna have a heck of a time making up my mind.
Can you clarify, are we selecting three in round one? Do we circle names?
Three.
Yes, select three.
Okay. Director Kylo, you got some question, please?
Director Blasi just answered my...
Okay. Director Leppold, do you have a question before we go to the actual voting process?
Yeah, are we just gonna go straight into voting or are we gonna have discussion?
Okay. I'm open to having a discussion. If, but according to the agenda, it was like we were straight away going into the voting. But perhaps we can just have one point of each one of us make. That would be really helpful. And then we can open it up for voting by Mr. Decapulis. Go ahead, Director Leppold. Do you have something to?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I was just curious as to, because I mean, it's, it's a tough pick. And so typically, do we normally, my, just my first question to you, do we normally do the first vote? And then, because I know in the past, we've discussed things before. So I was wondering, maybe Paul could, Mr. Decapulis could answer. Do we normally just go straight into it and then we talk later? Or can we talk now, just because this is a tough group to choose from? Just because everyone, there are so many people who are qualified. And as a board, you know, it's, it can be kind of tough to make a decision as we go. And so it'd be, I would love to hear the perspective from other board members on their thoughts.
Well, historically, this board has always gone directly from these candidate statements directly to voting. That's been your, that's been your practice. And after the first round, you, you end up seeing what your fellow board members are thinking with the first round vote. So that, that's been the history and practice of the board for probably the last 25 years. That doesn't mean it has to absolutely stay that way. But, but typically, we don't do that, voting for board members or budget committee members.
So I would propose that, you know, let's go ahead with the voting and because you had so many other items on the agenda. So, yeah, thank you very much, Director Bassy. Let's go ahead with the voting. And Mr. Decapulis, go ahead and you may conduct the...
So when everyone is, when everyone has finished voting, just please hold up your, your white sheet for me. Don't hold it up until you see everyone else hold it up. Looks like we have, do we have everyone? Okay, I'm just gonna start. You can, you can put them down now. I'm gonna start one by one. Director Hyen, please correct me if I'm in error, but Director Hyen voted for Mr. Harrigan, Ms. Marshbanks, and Mr. Parr. Was that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Uh, Director Goss? Can I see your card?
It's maybe hard for you to read. I voted for the first one, Guo, and Harnish and Urbina. The last.
Okay. Director Kylo? You're on mute. I see Director Kylo votes for Ms. Guo. Can you raise it up just a bit, please? Too high.
Marshbanks? Marshbanks, Harnish, and Guo.
Marshbanks, Harnish, and Guo.
Yes.
Thank you. Director Bethel? Harrigan? Marshbanks and Parr. Director Blasi?
Uh, Guo, Harnish, and Marshbanks.
And Director Leppold?
Uh, that's Guo, Marshbanks, and, I don't know how to pronounce her name, Urbina?
Okay. Board, Chairman Shandrigiri? He votes for Harrigan, Marshbanks, and Parr. I think I've gotten everyone, haven't I? Have I missed anyone? Okay. So we have an election for Marshbanks. Ms. Marshbanks has six votes. So round two, vote for two. Oh, excuse me. We have a, in, in looking at this, we have Ms. Guo also has four votes. Is that correct? I have Director Leppold, Director Goss, Director Kylo, and Director Bethel, or Director Blasi for Ms. Guo. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. We have an election for Ms. Guo.
Did Bethel vote?
Yes.
Okay.
So the second round, vote for one. But exclude Ms. Marshbanks and Ms. Guo.
Can we discuss before this one?
Pardon me?
Can we discuss before this one or is that not part of the process?
It's up to the board chair.
I think we'll go ahead with the voting now and then we can open it up.
If you're going to discuss, you need to do it before we vote because this will end it, potentially.
I agree.
And I've already voted.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I rule we go ahead and vote. And we have heard from each other candidate. We have read about the background. Let's go ahead and vote and complete the second round and pick out the next candidate.
Is everyone ready?
Yes.
Director? Director Hyen votes for Harrigan, is that correct, Director?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Director Blasi?
Sorry, Lisa Harnish.
Director Kylo votes for Harnish. Director Leppold votes for, I can't, or Ms. Urbina. Director Bethel votes for Harrigan. Director Goss?
Director Goss votes for Harnish.
Director Shandrigiri?
Harrigan.
We do not have a, a successful election in round two. Three votes for Harrigan, three votes for Harnish, and one vote for Urbina.
So Paul, you just go, we just vote on those two? So we've narrowed it down to those two? So the next round, we limit it to those two?
I would limit it to the three in that the ones who received no votes should be eliminated. And then you have three people.
But then we just end up back where we were. So we had two with three votes. Otherwise, if we keep the person with one vote, we end up exactly where we just came from.
I, I think for the thick democracy, it might be good to have a discussion as to why we're voting the way we are.
I would, you know, I don't think having a discussion for this round will be, it, it can be a little hard because I don't want that to influence others' vote. So I want people to vote objectively based on what they think is most important for all students. So that's why I'm a little torn of having a discussion and the votes being influenced by our decision. It's, we have to be representing all students. And, and we've heard from each of them and we read about the background. That's why I'm a little torn about having a discussion between round one and round two and round three. Go ahead. So what is the process, Mr. Decapulis? We follow now, we narrowed it down to the two?
The suggestion has been made, and I think it's a good one, to focus on the third round on Mr. Harrigan and Ms. Harnish. Those are the two candidates who each receive three votes. If someone else has another idea, now's the time to, to speak of it.
Go ahead, Director Leppold.
Well, I had one, but it was, it was shot down, so.
So please submit your votes for either Mr. Harrigan or Ms. Harnish in round three. Everyone ready?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Ms., or pardon me, Director Hyen voted for Mr. Harrigan. I'm seeing Director Goss votes for...
For Harnish.
Harnish, it's, okay. Director Kylo votes for Har- Harnish. Is that correct? I look at it, okay. Director Blasi? Is that Harnish?
No, Harrigan.
No, it's Harnish.
I see it as Harrigan. Oh, sorry.
No.
Blasi votes for Harnish, correct?
Okay.
Leppold? Director Leppold, how do you vote? For Harnish? Director Bethel? Mr. Harrigan? Direct, Board Chair Shandrigiri? Move it a little bit. You're, I can't see.
Harrigan, Harrigan.
Okay. So Ms. Harnish receives four votes and is elected.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you very much. This was wonderful. I wish, you know, those who didn't get elected, please don't go away. There's gonna be four school board positions coming up. Please run for the office. We need good people. We need, you know, all of you. If you could create more offices, I'm sure Mr. Decapulis won't let me. So please be involved. We need all hands on the deck to get this going. We need all push the car in the same direction. You all have amazing qualities. And those who didn't get elected, please be involved. Give me a call. Talk to our board members, call our vice chair. We need all help we can because we have gone through a brutal time. So we need good talent, hardworking, and people who are committed. So I really want to thank all of them. I, I kept reading all the background and resume. Oh, my God. It's just amazing talent we have. For whatever reason, our school board and our school district is lucky, very, very lucky to have all of you in our community. So please, don't go away. Good work for you. So having said that, thank you very much and congratulations to all those who won. And we are so grateful that you stepped up in times like this. You're gonna be better and we're gonna do good. So Mr. Decapulis, thank you for conducting this process. So thank you. So let's go to item number five. So let's go to item number five, consent calendar. Is there anyone who wants to pull anything out of the consent calendar, or can we, can I proceed with the motion to accept as presented?
And move that we accept the consent calendar.
I second it.
So, Director Blossi, you moved, and Vice Chair Bethel, you seconded, right?
Right. Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, are we ready to go for vote on this, full consent calendar?
Yes.
All right, so if I can see everybody, then I'll know who is voting which way. Dr. Dozenata, can we go from this to, oh, there you go. Director Goss?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Hyun?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Lippold?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Blossi?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Kylo?
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bethel?
Aye.
Thank you. And me as Chair Satya Chandrakiri, yes, aye. So the consent calendar as presented, and all voted in favors, so it's kind of approved as presented, thank you. Now we go to the item number six, the readings, Oregon School Board Association Resolution to adopt the OSBA.
Don't we need to do the approval of personnel action items? Five B?
Oh, sorry.
No, those came up both under the consent, consent agenda, so you voted for both.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, I hope I'm not breaking any laws, Superintendent Perry.
No, you're doing great.
All right. Mr. Dacopoulos. Let's go to item number six, readings, please. Oregon School Board Association Resolution to adopt OSBA 2021, 22 legislative priorities and principles as recommended by the Legislative Policy Committee. This is a long one, I, you know, in full disclosure, I am a Legislative Policy Committee member. I just wanted our community to know. So, this is a first reading, and I don't want to kind of go into too much detail, it's a kind of lengthy document. So, and our board members have been, you know, had an opportunity to read and review this prior to this meeting. So, and I want to thank Vice Chair Bethel to send that email to all of them. So, any questions or discussion on this item? Director Blossi, go ahead.
Just a real quick comment, not a question or really discussion. I just appreciate that the focus of the priorities remains on funding and you know, protecting the Student Success Act. And then I think important second to that is closing the opportunity gaps, you know, that's something we, we've talked about. You know, that, that is at the heart of everything we've been talking about, about equity and traditionally underserved students. And that's where, you know, we, we talk about data-driven decisions, you know, for talking about Native American students and the focus and the priority about closing that achievement gap for them over the past several years. So I do appreciate that OSBA, with all of the other possibilities of priorities, continues to focus on those opportunity gaps and stable funding, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, any other discussion on this topic? Yeah, Director Lippold, go ahead.
I would just love to hear, since you sit on the Legislative Policy Committee, I would love to hear your insight on, on the process, just that we, the board can have a better understanding, and then also how some of these conversations were. I know we see the policies here, but the experiences of you being there, I think would probably be
Yeah.
staple.
I, I think this is a very nice process. And we are the Legislative Policy Committee members and Oregon School Board Association. They have, like, they sit together when this gets discussed. And they have representation from all regions, including our region, folks from Eastern Oregon, people from Color Caucus, and various other things. And they have very good facilitators, the two of them, from, one from Lake Oswego, one out of state. And it was a very thorough process. It was a process they followed, it's called a world, you know, World Cafe method. You know, it's a process of getting everybody to give an input. And then we kind of go from table to table and kind of give feedback on to what other tables have done. So I thought this gave, and it was a very open, a very nonjudgmental, safe place where everybody could give different perspective from rural, urban, people of color, and big metropolitan cities like Portland and Eugene, and including a small place like Athena in Eastern Oregon, Irigon in Eastern Oregon, Baker City. So, I really thought this one. The couple of important areas that I really thought we could push, I got this idea, wanted to take the experience of our Salem Kaiser School District. And one of the things we really pushed hard was to, one of the three areas we said was overcoming digital divide is an equity issue. In fact, I remember the discussion we had in our own school board, what do we do? Is it a supplemental learning, or do we do a distributor computer? So that got elevated to the point that we said, no, this has to be an equity issue, overcoming the digital divide, not just access to a device. We talked about internet connectivity, how we are using, how the curriculum develops. So that is an example of our school board's experience got really elevated into pushing. Then we, you know, it really piggybacks with rural broadband access, which is a federal initiative, that how it gets rolled down into state. So, lot of very interesting ways to understand equity, both in terms of rural, urban, traditionally underserved community and things like that. So that is an example of our school district's experience got elevated to this level. So like that, we talked about different topics, which I thought was a very thorough and fair process. It was very educational for me. And we learned from each other, we supported each other through this. I don't know, I'll be happy to answer more questions and spend all night, but this is just an example, I wanted to illustrate the process we followed. Any other questions? Thank you for asking. So thi- this gives them an opportunity to take and then start approaching the legislators and others and saying, you know, when it times comes for funding and things like that. So it gives them an opportunity to advocate for the students and so it, it kind of touches upon all that, we have been talking about equity, using equity lens and representing our needs. So is there any other question or discussion on this before we move to another one? All right, so we are ready for six B. This is the revision of the language in School Board Governance Policy 11, item six. So so I, I'm just going to give a little bit of the background, but before I go to the background, I really want to thank our community today. You know, I, I really felt was, today was a wonderful meeting and where we were able to have some very good presentations, a public comment in a courageous way. Yet, I felt, you know, i- it was in an atmosphere of safety, and so that we really can really start talking about how our public comments should be. And we have gone through this process for a while, so and the background behind why we felt a need to kind of start addressing this, we have discussed it in the last meeting as well, why we felt we needed a process to address this topic, and why we needed to make an amendment to this. So I just want to read that portion that amendment says, and then we'll open it up for discussion, and then we'll ask any other questions around this topic. I'm just trying to locate the thing. Vice Chair Bethel, do you have the exact language in the BG 11? Do you mind reading it, so I can?
You want me to read?
Yeah, just read the amendment that we are proposing.
Yeah, so the amendment adds the language to BG 11, number six. The added language would be the board chair can ask that the public comment be civil, respectful, and does not lead to a sitri- situation of vitriolic communication, threats or intimidation towards each other, or cause any safety concerns in our community for our students, educators, staff, school board members, or families, or anyone else that need not accept comments that are obscene, derogatory, name-calling, racist, threatening, or direct criticism of named employees.
So this is the thing, I just wanted to open it up for a discussion among our board members, and see if any other thoughts we have, and what, how, what other take we have on this, before we, I can share my feedback on this topic. Go ahead, Director Lippold.
Well, I'd like to point out first off that I'm very wary of any thing that could potentially you know, stifle or limit the voice of people, just because in the United States, right, that's our biggest thing, it's something that separates us from a lot of other countries, is the fact that we allow free speech without repercussions and and, and so like when, when I read this, wow, it sounds great if you're talking about like most sensible things, and I believe that most people are good, I think that this could be used to silence people's voice. And my perception of what is respectful and civil, especially the word civil, you know, is different than yours, which is different than Kathy's, which is different than the next person, right? And so I think that the way this is worded, a, a lot of it's perception, and I think that this could be used as a tool to silence people, and so because of that, I don't, I don't think I'd be able to support this. But I'm open to hearing your, your thoughts.
Okay. And somebody put something in the chat, I don't know, I kind of lost, who was that?
That was me.
Okay, Dr. Hyun, go ahead, then, go ahead.
Yeah, I sat in on a legislative committee once, and there was testimony being given. The testimony did not follow the rules set forth by it's a chair, who, they had a direct thing they were working on. That person, because they wouldn't stop, was escorted out of the building by the state police. And I am certainly not suggesting we be escorting people out of the built, the virtual building or whatever. But they expect a certain behavior for those who are testifying. And those people who are testifying have a First Amendment right to say what they want within bounds. I mean, you can't yell fire, or you can't yell bomb, you know, the First Amendment, it doesn't allow you to say every single thing you want. I could say some pretty nasty things to somebody, I might be within my rights, but is that really helpful to us in serving our kids? I want to hear all the different voices, all the different concerns. But come on, people, we're, we are volunteers, we give our community many, many hours of our personal, private time, it takes away from our families, and we do it because we care. So, I don't think asking people to be civil is a problem. I do have a suggestion that we change one word. The vitriol, or whatever that word was, it was similar to that, just because I'm not sure that everybody will understand what that means, but other than that, I fully support this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thoughts here? Director Blossi, you have?
Sorry, let me unmute. Yeah. Sorry, I've, I've said this before, I, I don't think that this is necessary, because I, I agree with Jesse, I think that this is a step in the wrong direction versus a step towards inviting and encouraging public comment. We heard this tonight from our community, that they, they feel as though this is another opportunity for the board to potentially silence them, and I agree with that. And I've been very vocal about that. I think this fundamentally goes back to why we're in this situation we're in right now, and we've talked about this before, is, you know, unfortunately, this board has done and said things that the community doesn't agree with. And, you know, and it's their, their right, and their privilege to be able to tell us that they don't agree. But what we've seen the board do is try to silence those, those comments. And, and I think that that was a great point about, you know, a board chair's definition of civil and respectful may be very different than a community member. And, and quite frankly, we can't legislate or direct the community to be respectful of a board it doesn't respect right now. And for us to continue to tell the community that it has to be respectful, you know, just demonstrates a lack of understanding about what it means to be a leader and to be leaders in this community. We can't direct people to respect us when we're not doing what they're asking us to do, and we continue to not, to not listen, we continue to try to silence those voices. And I think if we want to move beyond, and we want the community to respect us, we need to start listening to them. And this really goes back to things that have happened in the last several months, that people feel strongly, this board continues to condone racism. And that's why we're, that's why we're here, that's why we continue to hear these comments. And, and I just think that this, adding this statement gives the board the potential to silence voices. I know we're not voting tonight, but if this is going to be passed, and I suspect that it will, because I suspect that the board chair has the votes, I would ask that we apply the same exact language to board policies for our own behaviors. If we're going to ask the community to be respectful and not create situations where people feel fearful, disrespected, we need to have that exact same language that applies to our board members, and we need to uphold it, because that's why we're here, having this conversation, is our board members are not demonstrating that same respect to our community. So if this is going to pass, I, I would, I would respectfully ask that we amend it that it includes the exact same language for board members.
Director Blossi, that's a good point you mentioned, you know, thank you for bringing that up. Any other, Director Goss, you have raised your hand.
As soon as I disconnect there, so I'm, I don't agree with that at all. And I think probably everybody knows that. But I think the meeting we held tonight was respectful, and other people said, gosh, it was an enjoyable night. So, I don't think anybody is saying, that, anybody in the board is saying that those people can't speak, but anything they want to be said, they can say without ripping up everybody on the board personally. I object to that, and I don't think it's healthy. I wouldn't let my kids just run wild and say anything they chose about anybody. That's not how we live in a society. They can say that they are unhappy with this decision. They can say that they are unhappy with this decision, or they're unhappy with that decision, or they're unhappy with me because of whatever decision I made. I can live with that just fine. What I want to do is reduce the heat that's being processed that way and the name-calling every time. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it looks like we are an appropriate board. And that's just how I feel about it. So I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dacopoulos, and then I'll go to Director Kylo.
Well, I, I would just like to, to weigh in for a moment as your legal advisor. Number one, as I read this, there's two phrases in this that I think are important to notice. The first is the phrase about the board chair can ask that public comments be civil. And as I read this, that does not, in, that does not empower the board chair to determine whether comments are civil or respectful or lead to a vitriolic communication or threats. All the boards, all this says is the board chair can ask the public comments be civil. Now, I, I think that if the, if the board chair were to say that they, the board chair was going to to actually censure what he or she thought was civil or respectful, that would be a problem for us. As, as elected officials, if you violate the free speech rights of the public, that creates liability for the board and for the individual board members. So I would caution any, any board chair to, to try to distinguish between civil and respectful comments and, and those that weren't. The second phrase is and need not accept comments that are obscene, derogatory, et cetera. That was the general language that I provided at the, one of the last several board meetings. And, and I think that the constitutional law would suggest that there are limits to free speech. We all know that, that some of them, and I've, I've tried to raise some of them here. And this probably isn't an exhaustive list, but it's a good list. And then that last phrase, or direct criticism of named employees. The public meeting law does not allow complaints to be heard in public relating to public employees. So that's, that's not really a constitutional provision. It's a statutory provision. So whether you have this or not, I think you can, you, you can limit comments that are directly obscene, derogatory, racist, threatening, or direct criticism of named employees. But I would urge you to recognize there's a difference between asking the public to, comments to be civil and respectful versus that other list that I think you, that, that people do not have the right to free speech on those particular points.
Thank you. So Mr. Dacopoulos, if I understand what you explained it, so by asking somebody, that's not against the law?
Well, you can always ask.
Yep, that's not against the law to ask someone, please be civil, right? That's what I'm, we are talking about in this amendment is please be civil. Is that against the law to ask that question to say, please be civil and respectful, or don't be vitriolic in your communication?
Well, it's okay to ask, but if, if you're, if you are using that first phrase to cut people off in their communications, that's a problem. Because that, what is civil and respectful is in the eye of the beholder.
Okay.
And so, I mean, again, you can, you can generally ask that comments be civil and respectful, and I think the existing instructions for public comments says something like that.
Yeah, it's already there.
And has, and has for years. If my memory serves me correctly, so that, the, the, that's never really been a problem because that has been the instructions for the public. And every, every board meeting that I can remember that you have served as board chair, you've simply reminded people that there's, there's these instructions. But so, so the, in summary, I, I have concerns that you would use the, the standard of civil and respectful to limit comments. But I think you can limit comments that are directly obscene, derogatory, racist, et cetera.
All right, we'll go to Director Leopold, and then we'll go to, who else raised the hand? Director Kylo or Marty?
I did.
Okay, let's go to Director Leopold, and then we'll go to Director Hein.
I, I would just say that I, I agree with Mr. Dacopoulos. The one thing I would say that Mr. Dacopoulos brought up was that it says that the board chair can ask. It doesn't say that you can cut people off for that. However, looking at the current way things are, right, we had, I think it was like September. And I'm not going to say whether you're right or wrong. I'm just going to say there have been times, right, where we have cut people off. And so my belief, and so that can be done anyways. So we don't need this policy to say that. What this does, though, is by saying that the board chair is asking people to be civil and respectful. I'm not saying the, the obscene derogatory name-calling racist, right? Those are all things I agree with. But the civil and respectful part is way up to interpretation. And what this does, while it doesn't say you can do that, you, because you can already do that, and it's already been done. What it does, though, is it gives you, it would give that board chair the legitimacy behind their decision. Because they could say, well, it's in RPGs that I can ask for that. And so that is my reason against this. So I understand that as the board chair can just ask, but since they can already cut people off anyways, what this does is it builds the legitimacy behind the words civil and respectful that are completely up to interpretation. The rest of it, I mostly agree with.
Director Hein, and then I want to ask a follow-up question to understand. Director Hein.
Well, in my opinion, there are times when people take advantage of agenda testimony when really they're calling about non-agenda items. And I think that's unfair to people who maybe don't get an opportunity to speak, who are actually calling up specifically about an agenda item. And I don't know how that works into this, if anything can be done about that, but it just doesn't seem. Gosh, I can't, my, my words aren't coming to me, but it's just not very nice to your fellow community members when you take advantage, and, and I'm not talking about any one specific person out there. I'm just, you know, make sure your stuff is really about the agenda and your, and non-agenda stuff goes at non-agenda time so that everybody has an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other feedback? And then I have a question to clarify. Mr. Dacopoulos, there are a couple of other places in our board governance policy and the Robert's Rules of Conducting a Board Business, which talks about, which does actually basically this, some of what language more or less fits in with Robert's Rules of Conducting a Business, of how to make it orderly. And also how to have a reasonable interpretation that it fits, it's aligned with other objectives or goals of the school. How do we reconcile with this? The reason I'm bringing it up is we have a recent Oregon Department of Education directive, which we discussed in the last work session on objectionable symbols of hate. Then we have a safe and welcoming school, anti-bullying, and aligned with trauma-informed schools and community. In fact, the OD's new directive says the three symbols of hate, no swastika and confederate flag and others. I really look at the others is also equally important. So then it talks about several other objectives. And most important thing is ultimately if we were to achieve a trauma-informed school system or community, then the first important step is to ensure safety at all level, top to bottom, bottom to top. And I agree with Director Blasi. It, we also have to embrace this at the highest level and say, we also agree with this, that we are not going to use any vitriolic communication among ourselves. We are not going to be dehumanizing each other. We are not going to be tearing each other up. Because that is how we have to have a top-to-bottom alignment, in my opinion. The second, so we need to really, either we accept that ODE directive, which talks about three things. And what is there to stop somebody from calling and repeating some of those objectionable words for three minutes? And so that is a possibility, or having a screensaver which has a confederate flag and then make a public statement.
Was there a direct?
Clarify this, because I really took, personally, I felt that there are a couple of things I have been observing in this community in the last three months, especially since I am in this position, but even, you know, there, we are going through unprecedented time. At no point in time, this is intended to stop the public comment process. That's what I want to really make it very clear. We really want for the health of our republic, we want public to participate. And today was a good example. They disagreed on policies, they disagreed on approach of solving issues, they disagreed on performances, including my call performance, but we can do that in a way that we don't have to tear each other's humanity. And second thing is we are dealing with some very unprecedented time. The biggest call has been right from our president-elect is to, we had to start healing. Our community has gone through horrible battling. And the context is different. And I'm going to really cite some examples which I observed in the last three months, which I shared with our board in an email, which really is the background of the decision which led to this kind of thing. Reality is, we don't need a policy amendment to be civil with each other. This is a public school we are running here. Where does it say we need a policy amendment to say we need to be civil and respectful? I mean, we can't ask anything that is different from anti-bullying and other kind of things. So you know, one of the things we noticed is, I've heard from many community members who feel very traumatized, unfair, unsafe, and afraid to share any alternative perspective because they feel making such or even emailing such, they are being targeted, threatened, shamed, blamed, or attacked on social media. One of the student in a district task force was so scared and feared for her life because they held a different perspective on safety, that we had to write a letter to some community leader. We had to seek guidance from your legal counsel to omit the last name on written comments because people felt unsafe because they had a different view and we had to protect them. This concept of, this, some of the comments have been essentially like othering some members and their families. This has caused safety concerns in our community. And the threat system, assessment system had to be triggered. You know, in my experience, I see, you know, people talked about trauma inform. The attempts to dehumanize certain members of group is often a preamble to community violence. This is my experience. So we need to be very, very careful in a time like this. Like, you know, personally, I felt, this is my personal experience. It was very hard for me as a person of color in South Asian. When I found equalances drawn between David Duke and Nazi policies and me as an immigrant physician, person of color, serving the community. Many in my South Asian community and people whom I represent asked me, why, what is this? Why do we allow this to go on? It was really difficult. I really want to point out that many of my community I represent have escaped community violence in the countries they had lived because of the religious and other differences. Some even had their family members killed after September 11 terror attack because they had some resemblance to it. So I can't say for sure what is, and it's wrong on my part to judge the motive. When somebody calls and draws an equivalence between me as a South Asian, a person of color, I begin to wonder if it was per intended to cause fear and intimidation, or is it some form of verbal violence, or they think, they did not think that invoking such terms would bring some public rage against it. I felt the anonymity of this kind of virtual meet, meeting makes it very hard when they start using it. I felt it was all, perhaps I was wrong in perceiving it. It is almost like marking somebody and a dog whistle for certain community to go after. And when a national news picks up things like, you know, characterizes me as a white supremacist, I want to be very, very clear to this community. Without any doubt, we all deplore racism and the virulent end of the white supremacy. No, but there is, has no place in any civilized nation. But when they start drawing such equalances, then I take objection as a person immigrant in this country. And I think, you know, if you look at color, religion, race, then why doesn't this fit into the ODE's directive when you talk about color, religion as a basis? Just like a Jewish person of Jewish background will be horrified when a swastika is the symbol. And they should rightly be horrified. So why should I not interpret this amendment is aligned with the ODE directive? You know, so I really think this is a really important issue. And, you know, we didn't take it lightly. I want people, the public to know, it has been a thoughtful process has gone, and I have sought consultation from Oregon School Board Association, the president of our Color Caucus of OSBA. I have kind of discussed with our board members, and, you know, we've got a lot of thought has gone into this. And ultimately, what is it that we are asking? We are asking to have some kind of guidelines to have a trauma-informed school. How is that different from what we are all talking about? Why do we need the OD? So I just want any thought on how to have a policy that's aligned with the ODE directive and make it trauma-informed? And where each and everybody in the community is feels safe, until we achieve that, we cannot achieve any other thing.
Are you asking me a question?
Yes, I'm going to ask you to kindly comment why this is not aligned, if it is aligned with ODE directive, or is it not aligned with ODE directive?
I think the simpler, the better. You already have specified in your instructions that you would like public comments that are civil and respectful. That's been the case for years. It's your job as the school board chair to not accept comments that are the bad comments like obscene, derogatory, racist, threatening, et cetera. I think you're going to have to, you, you're going to, to have to listen to public comments that you do not want to hear. But unless they are, they fit in a very narrow category of truly bad comments. Not just comments that make board members uncomfortable or they don't like, but comments that we have unanimous agreement that those don't belong in a boardroom. Then you're, then you're going to have to accept the comments. And you're going to have to listen to each person who testifies. And if, if you hear something that is truly impermissible, you're going to have to say that we can't have that here. And we need you to not use those words in your public comments. Just do it that way. You've settled, you have, you said a lot in your, in your question to me, so I think that's about all I can, all I can respond. And I, I did see that Director Blasi had, had another comment maybe before I should have even answered this question.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Blasi.
Thank you. So a couple of things from, such a, from what you under, what you were just saying. And I, I do appreciate that you, you've gone through a thoughtful process for this, but but I'm a little concerned because I, I read what you shared with OSBA and some others. And so when you say you ran this past O S B A, you ran this past others, I think that there was some information left out that would have been helpful. That would have been a little more clarifying. I think the focus was on how the board is feeling. And there wasn't a lot of information about how the community is currently feeling about the board. And so I think when we provide information to somebody seeking the response that we want to hear, that's the response we get. So I'm I I'm I'm a little cautious about us saying to the community that, you know, O S B A members were of this. And I know you didn't say that exactly, but I think that that expression that we're unfortunately giving. Because I I don't think that the information that was shared was all encompassing about how we got to this place in time. And the other thing I wanted to clarify is when I suggested, you know, an amendment to this, it wasn't about language, about how board members interact. I I think that we've had some some thoughtful conversations about that. And I think that we've all agreed to to focus on that. What I was referring to was a language that reflects how we expect the community to communicate with us and how language that would clarify how we expect board members to communicate with the community. And I don't mean just in board meetings. I'm talking about things again that have caused the community to become so upset with us. When people post, when board members post things on their personal Facebook pages and other things that are hurtful and harmful and sound threatening to people in the community, especially communities of color. You know, quite frankly, we started some of this and I think that that's what you're not acknowledging. That board members have done and said things. And the board hasn't hasn't publicly said that those those things were wrong. And that's why our community continues to be upset with us. So if we're going to tell the community that we expect them to speak to us respectfully and not create traumatic situations for for us as board members, then we need to apply that same same expectation of board members and hold board members accountable that we don't do things and say things, whether it's on social media or in articles that make community members feel threatened and that we don't support them because that's what's happening. You can say everything you want about how it is for us poor board members. But we are not acknowledging the trauma and the fear that we are placing in our community by the things that we say and do inside and outside of this boardroom.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion on this? I just want to kind of sum up and say this is a difficult but necessary amendment. It is a difficult because we are having these kind of very important but courageous conversation. We are never going to heal as a nation, as a community and have a trauma informed system unless we are willing to have this kind of courageous conversation. I really think this board is amazing board. It's a very mature board. And community is also, I have a lot of respect. I believe that we can create a safe space for different community members. Whether it is our words, how we say is equally important. It's not just that the board members feel this way. No. I am prepared to have very courageous conversation. But there are a lot of people who are listening, both within our Salem Kaiser area. Lot of children, lot of families, lot of communities who have escaped all kinds of trauma. And the people listening from out of state, as you said. So it is really important to understand trauma doesn't affect just because somebody took my name. It affects everybody who is listening also. So you know, the last several months, one of the important thing I noticed, you know, perhaps it's because of all kinds of things going on. Our community has become so polarized that we are not able to even understand and empathize with the other person's hurt and feeling. So everybody has been affected by this. So we have to do as a school board, as a district, everything in our power to start healing. And part of that is our narrative, the word, the way we describe each other. So it is a really important first step in setting the stage for a trauma informed community. Otherwise, we are going to have people who are going to be hiding. Some of them are hiding and scared. And some of them are going to be vocal. Nevertheless, everybody is hurting in this process. The second important reason I feel this is it has been like the board versus the community, community versus the board, board versus the superintendent and the district. In this process, we are really not able to look into the serious underlying issues. And what are those? We want our children to feel that they can trust and belong in this school. Second important thing, we need to close the achievement gap, academic achievement gap. The Salem Reporter really carried a very good article. There's been a serious learning loss. And those are the important areas we have been spinning in circle that we have not been able to really address. And I really think we need to get to a point where we create a safe space where people can have discussion. When families are calling and saying my child is not able to learn in the distance learning, they also need a safe space to come and present here. So I really think we have to get an handle on this. We all have to push the car in the same direction. Nobody in the board is against achievement. Nobody is in the board is against listening to the community. We really want the community to be there. We are the only school board in the state of Oregon, which allows almost forty percent of our time for public comment. But we want it to be in a way that it creates a level of safety that people are not ducking and hiding. And they can really talk about important issues. What about the black students lagging behind in their achievement? Why is the Latinx kids are not able to do well in STEM education? Those are some serious topics we have not been. It has been either the board has gone through a lot of change. I mean, board has taken serious step. We are as transparent and accountable as we can get. In the last three months, we have gone through retreat. We have gone through self assessment. We have gone through an extreme makeover and deep cleansing as much as we wanted. But we really haven't been able to reach a point of having a civil dialogue within among our board and the district saying what is the reason the achievement gap is not closed? So these are the kind of important issues we have not been able to arrive at in the process of this kind of us versus them narrative, which is what I'm really talking about. So safety is very important for us to get to that point. Vice Chair Bethel, go ahead.
I just, I want you to know that I really respect everything that you're saying. I think we're getting a bit off topic for the agenda and it's nine thirty and we have about an hour's worth items. If we could get going, that would be really, really helpful.
Well, thank you very much and I appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks for that reminder. All right, let's go to the next item, seven reports. Superintendent Perry, you would like to tell us a little bit.
All right, I'll go quick. Executive limitation report number six. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. As you know, we've had a number of changes because of the pandemic and closing down schools. If you look at the number one, but the top of page two, the second full paragraph, we did have to modify our staff evaluation processes last spring in alignment with the O D E guidelines. So our evaluation processes basically ended in March. And so we've noted that there evidence of non compliance are none because even though we didn't finish, it was under legal guidance. Same with the administrator evaluation. We did have a number of incomplete evaluations because we quit the evaluation process in March as well, according to O D E guidelines. And then I think the other thing I just want you to know is under the pending executive limitations. We've really been working with a group of our licensed educators and S K E A around our evaluation process for this year. So I want to commend that team that has worked for multiple meetings to really streamline the evaluation process for our licensed educators. Because what we know is that many teachers, especially this year, are in the place of feeling like new teachers. And so we are really trying to create a culture of growth and self reflection and getting better in their craft. And not to have too many requirements around the evaluation process. So we've reached a good agreement and have a good path forward with that. And they've been great at the table. And so with that, that's the highlights of that report.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry.
Am I the only one that can't see the screen? Is it just it just so it's loading? Maybe we can just see each other for now until it wants to work.
Oh, it's it's I can see it on mine.
I can.
You can see it.
Okay, well, hey, never mind. It just says he's trying to share something with me.
Yeah, okay.
The next report is our Head Start report and our pre kindergarten report and Dr. Sprouls. I'm going to have you do some highlights of this report. He's going to give you a couple of other items that are beyond Head Start. I know you've had a chance to read this report, so he won't read it to you. He'll just give you a couple of comments.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Perry and Dr. Shandra Giri and board members. Just as a note to remember, Head Start, one of the requirements for Head Start is that they give two yearly reports to the school board. This is the first report. The second one, Coordinator Stephanie Wetzel will bring families. You might remember it's kind of the highlight of it's one of my best school board memories that I have is bringing some kids and families to talk about the impact of our pre kindergarten programs, particularly Head Start has for their families. But that will be coming up in the spring. So this report basically highlights where we are with our Head Start programming. One of the things to remember with the student investment account is that the umbrella of funds through the Student Success Act also included funds to accelerate pre kindergarten programming across the state. In our district, that means that we had a big influx of dollars. With our Head Start budget increased by about eighty percent this year. We also had a large increase in our preschool promise dollars. Remember, we have several different programs for our pre K. We have migrant pre K, we have a Head Start program, we have preschool promise, and we also have title pre K. So we've recently introduced in person programming. So we have programming going on at fourteen different locations. And just to highlight one of them, because it's a really exciting community partnership, is the Seymour Center. So we have a class, we actually have two classrooms, building up to four classrooms eventually of preschool promise kids at the Seymour Center. And if we weren't in the in the time of increasing COVID numbers, which I'll talk about that in just a minute, I would really encourage school board members to go take a visit of the Seymour Center because it's a unique partnership where we have classrooms there. The E S D has classrooms there which are pre K classrooms. There's also a dental clinic there. There's mental health supports. There's a food pantry there. There's a clothing support center. And it's really truly a one stop shop for families to be able to get support and also have very, very high quality pre K programming. So it's it was headed up by Catholic charities and bringing together a lot of different community partners with Salem Kaiser is one of the primary community partners that helped develop that site. So so that's that's about it for I and I just want to give a shout out in case any of our pre K teachers are still listening tonight. They have really worked hard to make connections with our families. Remember, these were the same group of teachers who who had were essential childcare providers in the spring when we were providing childcare to some doctors and nurses, E M T drivers, essential community workers at East Salem Community Center. So this is the same group of teachers and coordinators and administrators who have who have been making that happen now for several months. We are running programs face to face and digital. So a digital pre K program, as you can imagine, is is quite a thing to get off the ground with three year olds. And so Coordinator Wetzel has been doing a great job leading this for this fall. And we'll have a more comprehensive report in a few months.
Does anyone have questions of Dr. Sprouls?
Oh, I can't see others. Yeah.
So I do have one quick question, if it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Director Blasi.
I know in the past we talked about the and maybe it's in here, I apologize, Craig. We've talked about the waitlist for Head Start. And I know that we were looking at additional funding sources or capacity. Are we still kind of in that same same situation where we don't have the adequate capacity?
Thank you for asking that question, Director Blasi, because that's the part of this I forgot and Stephanie would not have been happy if I would have forgotten that. We actually don't have a waitlist right now. So we are in a unique position, first time since I've been in this job, where we are still recruiting families mid year. So if families, so if if a family is interested in our Head Start program or preschool promise program, or anyone listening knows families who could qualify for those programs, please call the East Salem Community Center for more information. And part of the reason we haven't had large signups is because of our COVID rates and and because of the way we've started our programming. As a as something that we'll discuss at at the next board meeting, I believe. We've also seen a really low kindergarten attendance this year, our lowest attendance on record for registrants for our kindergarteners. And so for our youngest learners, families, we have we have been struggling to communicate with them to get them registered. So right now we don't have a waitlist. When we come back full in person, we're going to be able to add a lot more students. Because right now we're offering it with very small cohorts for only partial days. And so when we come back with the new funding and the new capacity, I anticipate that we'll be able to address a lot of the waitlist that we've had in the past.
That's really great to hear.
Dr. Sprouls, what is the eligibility criteria for somebody to avail this program?
There's of course an age criteria, so you can't be sixteen and register for the programs. And then there also are how much the family makes. And it depends for the different programs, their eligibility for those. Some of the specific programs, say for our migrant education, is also there's some criteria that the family needs to meet for that. So it's a little too complicated to go into just but but if you're interested, if we have families interested, I would encourage them to call the East Salem Community Center for more information on if their family might qualify.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much. This is a very important age group, in my opinion. You know, zero to three, zero to five kind of thing. The more we can invest our little children and get them started this way, you know, the outcome of behavioral emotional self regulation sets in place and they are going to do very well. And often we miss this age group intervention, then it becomes a little shaky down the road. So this is the most important part from brain development. I really think this is a great program we are offering. The fact that we have no waiting list means there is really no reason why any of those little children shouldn't be enrolled here.
And we also thank you for that, Dr. Shandra Giri. And we also know based on our data in the district that our students show up to kindergarten below their statewide peers, specifically in things like letter naming and number fluency. So the need in our community for high quality pre K programs is essential. We we know we can catch kids up over time, but having them come in at that level is essential. So yes.
So this is a So this is a very important equity monitoring indicator, in my opinion. Both for opportunity that they can all be enrolled. So that way, we have already met that, all of them could be accommodated. And also the outcome, whether they are able to emotionally self-regulate, behaviorally self-regulate, recognize those letters. So I was, the question is, are we using this as one of the metrics for outcome in our Salem Kaiser School District as the equity indicator? And then how are we scaling it up for different communities like Latinx and Black and Pacific Islanders, South anything?
So I, I love where you're headed with this. I might ask you to hold that thought.
Okay, okay, sorry, sorry.
Because that's exactly we're going to get into. What do we want for our key performance indicators? And we could, you and I could talk about these all night, I think.
All right.
But I do think this is an important one to consider.
Okay, not at nine forty-five in the night.
No, maybe not.
Let's, yeah, you need to let people go home and sleep. I really want to thank you and any questions before we proceed, and then we can get to that. We are almost coming. Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Sprouls, Superintendent Perry.
I think I have one more, Dr. Shandra Geary.
All right.
And this one's not as optimistic. So I just wanted to give the board the COVID metrics update. So Dr. Udo, there we go. So this is the new W E S D website reflecting the new measurements for when we might be able to re-enter schools. Just glancing at the red map, I think tells you where our COVID rates are across the state. You can see the little red slice, which is Marion County, kind of right there in the middle. And then you can see that our case rate has been greatly increasing week after week. With the new metrics, it's a two-week glance rate. And so they add up all of the daily rates per one hundred thousand people in a county and then give you a two-week at a glance. And so our, our current numbers, as you can see in the, in the graph, are two hundred and eighty-two cases per one hundred thousand. And this is a two-week look back. And this is the highest numbers we've had since we've started keeping track. The thing which is also alarming is our test positivity rate. So this is, so thirteen point two percent of all people who come in for a COVID test, test positive. Again, a very high number, which is alarming, given the rate, the, the way that these rates are increasing. Just as something to remember, the, the metrics did change with, with the governor's new rules. But we are still in stage two. Because we don't currently have the metrics that would allow us to advance to stage three, would be initiating of a blended model. So stage two focuses primarily on limited in-person instruction, and that's where we are at as a district. You can go on to the next one. Thank you. So as you probably all saw, the governor issued a two-week pause, which starts on Wednesday for Marion County. Originally, it was Marion County, Multnomah, Malheur, Joseph, and a few other counties. And then by the weekend, with the counts continuing to rise, the governor's office added six more counties to that list that are now in the pause, including Washington County as well, so Multnomah and Washington both, up in the Portland area. And all the school districts that are in those areas are impacted by this pause. The pause starts on Wednesday. And it's the way the governor is trying to take actions to start trying to flatten the curve for, so we, so our COVID numbers just can start coming down. The, the, the message from the governor's office is that the reason we need to do this is to get kids back in school. And I think that's really important for us to remember that even though there's a countywide pause, the word we've gotten from the Department of Education is that this does not directly impact school programming. And the reason it doesn't impact school programming, because we found that schools are not super-spreaders, because we are following much more stringent safety guidelines than people follow out in the community, quite frankly. So we adhere to wearing face masks, we adhere to frequent hand washing, we adhere to carrying capacity in our, in our classroom spaces. So kids are spread out. We adhere to contact tracing. If someone does test positive or shows symptoms, we, we know how to take care of that. So schools compared to other places throughout the community have not been shown to be spreaders, high-spreading incidents. The, the highest spreading incidents right now are personal social gatherings. That's where most of the incidents are happening around the state and being tracked back to social gatherings. So the countywide pause does not impact school programs, which means our L I P I, Superintendent Perry's favorite acronym, can continue following our Ready School Safe Learners Guidelines. At this point, our O S A A activities, we have activities happening at all of our high schools. And they are sports and music activities. They can continue to happen with the, with the exception that we can't have more than fifty people in a shared space. The biggest spaces, of course, at our high schools right now are our gyms. And so we need to control the number of, of kids and adults in a gym at any one time. And then there, the guidance also encourages us to maintain strong relationships with Marion County Health, because they're going to be an active decision-maker moving forward on, on what this looks like. So here's just a snapshot of where we are with limited in-person instruction. And remember, this does not replace comprehensive distance learning. We need to make sure that people understand this is not school, bringing kids back for a full day of school. A student can only attend for two continuous hours on any one day. A staff member can only interact with three groups of students in a day or five groups of students for the entire week. We, as a district, have decided to not greatly expand the number of students coming to each school for limited in-person. And that's a step that we're taking, a cautionary step, based on our COVID numbers. And us trying to do our part to balance the need for students to be able to have access to their teachers and access to the schools against the need to also slow the curve with the growth of COVID. We currently have forty-two schools offering programs. We are going to have programs at each school offered in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. Our initial evidence has shown that when students come in, which we all know this, but when students come in, even for a two-hour check-in with their advisory teacher or a two-hour check-in with one of their teachers, it makes a significant difference on how they do across their day in C D L. So we have hundreds of teachers who are wanting their kids to come back, wanting to re-establish those relationships with them. But we're not going to greatly expand the numbers at this point, out of, out of an abundance of caution. Just to reiterate, though, our safety procedures are being followed, our safety protocols are being followed. We have a very strong COVID response team, we have a strong relationship with our local public health authority. So our teachers and staff are doing all the right things. It's just that our community is experiencing a very high spike. Inevitably, the kids in the community will come into our schools and, and then, and we need to be able to take care of them when they do. So that was kind of a rapid-fire presentation about our COVID numbers.
All right, thank you, Dr. Sprouls, and thank you Superintendent Perry. And any quick question before we move, and then I would like to make a sedition? Any questions on this? All right. So as far as the board schedule is concerned, what's the information for board schedule? I think we had tried to kind of poll the board. I think we have moved it to December first week, right? Is that right? As Superintendent Perry, when we will have, or we are waiting for?
We're having trouble finding a right date, but that's our goal, is to find.
All right.
That first week.
We would like to have a work session. So that's what we do. So now we have a couple of things, so we have a, now we'll open it up for public comments on non-agenda items. And the way we would like to do is to kind of make sure that we have, take a few callers. You'll have half an hour to take a few callers, or five. And then I'm going to ask Ms. McDaniel to help facilitate, read some comments on different topics that we have received pertaining to the distance learning and some other topics pertaining to connectivity issues, just to kind of get the community to also listen to different perspectives on different types of topics that we have heard. So with that, let's open it up for a public comment for non-agenda items. Ms. McDaniel, would you like to start? It'll take about five callers.
Can you hear me?
We have thirty minutes altogether.
Okay, thank you, to your Shandra Geary, Board Directors, Superintendent Perry. Aaron, we have our callers all set to go.
Yeah, we have about five on the line, so Patrice is the first one here, and she is unmuted. So Patrice, please begin with your first last name.
Hello, I am Patrice Pollard. I'm a Salem community member. Good evening, Superintendent Perry, members of the school board. I support the students of blues when they ask to have S R Os permanently removed from our schools. And the vested funds used for educational resources for Black Indigenous students of color. Director Chandra Geary, I hope you will change your mind about S R Os in the Salem Kaiser Schools. Because as you know, people of color have endured systemic racism from the police throughout the years. People, police often view Black and Brown people as threatening and criminal, and they react accordingly. Therefore, for BIPOC students, police officers are symbols of oppression, intimidation, and violence. You, as a mental health advocate, should be aware of the added mental stress S R Os in our schools have on our BIPOC students. These young students belong in our schools, and they deserve an educational system where they feel safe and free from toxic mental stress. This board had a conversation September twenty-second regarding the policy of taking oral public comments. At some point in this conversation, some members stated that they did not like being called names, specifically white supremacists. I would like to remind you that our students did not choose this label for you. You chose it for yourself when you aligned yourselves with known hate groups with ties to white supremacy and white nationalism. Your discussion quickly turned into a very inappropriate attack on the students who are advocating for no S R Os in the Salem Kaiser Schools. There was talk about a perceived lack of manners on the students' part. Their honesty was questioned. There was a suggestion they would fail in their future workplaces. And then a mention of being tried as adults if they committed a crime. Please consider this. Some members were defensive and upset that they were being called out as white supremacists. And then the comments revealed the racism. These comments crossed a line. These students, their parents, and this community deserve an apology. I wish you could do these young students without the cloudy lens of racial bias. Because if you could, you would see them as they are: talented, courageous, determined, organized, and striving to make the school system better for themselves and future students. They keep giving you chances to do the right thing, so I ask you once again to please do so. Dr. Chandra Geary, as chairperson of this board and a mental health advocate, I urge you to work on removing S R Os from the Salem Kaiser Schools permanently. Please keep our young people safe from the toxic mental stress of systemic policing in our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Aaron, who is our next caller, please?
My next caller is Paul. See, Paul, please go ahead.
Hello.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, my name is Paul Crissell, and I'm a community member. I live in Zone Three. I just want to say thank you, Sharon. Your comments tonight were really appreciated. Before I get into my remarks about the school resource officers, I just wanted to point out a change in the term of art being used in the equity community. We don't talk about achievement gaps anymore, because that puts the onus on the student. We talk about opportunity gaps, because all students are capable of learning. It's the barriers that have been placed in their way that limit their opportunities. It's our responsibility as a community and as board members to remove barriers and, and create opportunities for students. So I'll get to the point. Dr. Shandra Geary, as you know, an essential foundation for mental health is the feeling of safety. Students of color are telling you that the presence of school resource officers makes them feel unsafe. We should listen to the lived experience of students and their families. As a psychiatrist, I urge you to lead the school board to remove school resource officers from the schools and create an atmosphere of safety for our students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Aaron, who is our next caller, please?
His caller is Bethany. See if Bethany can unmute.
Hello?
Bethany.
Yes, Beth, go ahead, Beth, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Bethany Lowberg. And I'm from Northeast Salem. I grew up in Salem and graduated from North Salem High School and currently work as youth ministers leader at Salem Midnight Church with U C U ten same-day public schools. And I also serve as the chair of the Board of the Oregon Fellowship of Reconciliation. Which is, and Dr. Satya Shendigiri, I know that you care deeply about students' mental health. Because of this, I call and need to acknowledge and address the mental health impacts of having police in schools for Black, Indigenous, and other students of color. In his book, My Grandmother's Hands: Racialized Trauma on the Pathway, Demanding Our Hearts and Bodies, therapist and counselor Rosamana Khan looks at how generations of racialized trauma lives in the bodies of Black persons, white persons, and police officers in the U S, shaping the ways our bodies interact at levels that are much deeper than our conscious thoughts. Since the beginning of this country, police have been used to control Black bodies and lives. The impacts that trauma continues to live on in our bodies and interactions today. In our community and our country, people of color have experienced police as a source of harm and terror. How can we expect youth to have had traumatic experiences with police in the community to feel safe in schools? You've heard the testimonies from Latinx, Indigenous, and Black youth and young adults in our community share over and over their traumatic interactions with S R Os in our schools, starting from as early as kindergarten, as a response to situations such as being nailed out of school or getting in a fight after being called the N-word. The presence of police in schools increases the level of toxic stress faced by Black and Brown students and students with disabilities, especially for those who've already had experience with criminal justice and immigration systems. As an advocate for mental health, we require that you and the rest of the board members divest the funds that go into hiring and placing S R Os in the Salem Kaiser School District and use those funds to reinvest in the education of Black, Indigenous students of color and students of color, as stated in previously submitted demands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Lowberg. Aaron, who is our next caller?
Yeah, our next caller is Isaiah, and he is unmuted, so.
Isaiah, please, go ahead.
Did, did that work? Can you hear me?
Yes, Isaiah, go ahead, Isaiah.
All right. So content warning, the following testimony will involve descriptions of recent racial violence that occurred in the Salem Kaiser area. My name is Isaiah Swan. I'm an I A at Atlanta Elementary. I live in Kaiser, Oregon. And yeah, I'm regularly scared for my life as a result of my public engagement here, which is a white male, and that is not an experience I'm used to, but I guess I'll get used to it. May I begin?
Please, go ahead, Isaiah. Go ahead, please.
Cool. Two weeks ago, on October twenty-sixth, Herman Leslie Graham III died in Northeast Salem of gunshot wounds. Eyewitnesses say that the shooter repeatedly screamed the N-word at Herman as he died. On October twenty-ninth, Rudy Martinez Cortez died near downtown Salem of gunshot wounds sustained at the hands of the Salem police officer. Police claim an officer was wounded by Rudy, but have yet to claim Rudy had a firearm. On November seventh, in downtown Salem in front of the Capitol, a pro-jump demonstration became a white supremacist rally as Proud Boys showed up en masse. Videos were taken of attendees flashing white power symbols and assaulting counter protesters and journalists as Salem and Oregon police observed but did not intervene. A few hours later, an anti-fascist Black Lives Matter march began near Cregor Hall. Police declared unlawful assembly within five minutes. Videos document police coordinated with the attendees of the white supremacist rally as they violently suppressed and arrested B O M marchers. The blatant political bias Salem and Oregon police displayed once again made national news. On May eighteenth of last year, Jesse Lippold attended a free speech event attended by Proud Boys and headlined by Joey Nation. Proud Boys affiliated white supremacists with a documented history of assaulting left-wing protesters alongside them. Lippold has yet to explain what attracted him to this event, why he did not leave this event, what he became aware of his attendees' political affiliations, and exactly what views he and those fascists share. In 2018, Marty Hyatt campaigned alongside Joey Nation. Last year, Marty Hyatt's husband Jeff Hyatt, member of white supremacist militia group The Three Percenters, was photographed with Salem white supremacists Angela Roman and Chester Roth as Chester flashed a white power sign. Participants in the photograph were holding campaign signs for Marty Hyatt and Satya Shandra Geary. In the past few months, Marty Hyatt defended The Three Percenters during a school board meeting and solicited testimony from Facebook profiles flaunting Confederate and solicited testimony from Facebook profiles flaunting Confederate flags. Marty Hyatt and Kathy Goss collaborated in providing you some of the most blatant and disgusting racial commentary on our students possible to deliver without use of the N-word. Jesse Lippold commiserated with those who believed he shouldn't have to apologize for his transphobia because it's funny. Paul Kyle, president of Blackface, and Satya and Danielle Bethel continued to stand idly by, not even thinking the Confederate flag was important to address, trivializing their pure bigotry as they reap the political and financial benefits of these individuals and of order basis of support. Public documents indicate Hyatt, Goss, Lippold, Satya, and Bethel share a campaign staff and are funded by the same pro-life and Republican advocacy sources. Danielle, the reason you can't see the systemic racism in our community is because you and your peers are the systemic racism. Satya, if you don't want equivalencies to be drawn, just stop behaving in ways that make it so easy to draw equivalencies. Satya, the reason you keep banging these drums is to show you that you and your peers can't be trusted to make decisions regarding things like achieving gaps, because you and your peers are explicitly and directly committed to supporting the racist structures in society that cost our BIPOC community their lives and cognitive achievement gaps in the first place. And so do you, as long as you provide these people the platforms to knight for our students. There are so, so many Indigenous students in our district that so neither voice is heard, and you remove them from their own task force and open a district-wide staff meeting not with their voices but with transphobic Proud Boys affiliate Jesse Lippold. It shouldn't have to be explained why that is a problem. It shouldn't have to be explained to any of you why any of this is a problem. And these testimonies, it's not our job to be helpful to you. It's not our job to make you feel good about who you are and what you do. It's our job to be honest about the needs that you are ignoring. And as an employee of this district, I need to do my job by pointing out the obvious wrong. The obvious wrong is that it is abundantly ludicrously mathematically obvious that you, the adults of this board, are not capable of equity. You do better. The rest of you resign. Our students deserve so much better than this. Isaiah Swan, IA, Land Elementary. Thank you.
Mr. Swan, thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Yeah, we have Caitlin. So Caitlin can.
Welcome, please.
Hello?
Yes, Caitlin, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Hello, my name is Caitlin Gibson, and I'm a community advocate, Willamette University alumnus, and former educator. I've worked in public schools in Washington State, Minnesota, and Oregon, including the Salem Kaiser School District. And I've personally witnessed the ways in which the presence of police in public schools and models of school policing in general disproportionately and negatively impact the safety and well-being of students of color. And that's why I'm calling in today. I want to echo and support the demands set forth by the students of color who have called for the removal of SROs throughout the Salem Kaiser School District. I believe it is this board's ethical responsibility to act on those demands to ensure that the school board's budget and its investments reflect an actionable commitment to help heal rather than exacerbate the pervasive racial trauma experienced by students of color. Per the testimony shared earlier this evening, we know that the presence of police in our schools ultimately puts the safety of Black students, Indigenous students, other students of color, and students living with disabilities at risk. Dr. Chandragiri, as an advocate for mental health, we need you to push the rest of the school board to make the right decision and reallocate the funds that enable the hiring and placement of SROs to the education of BIPOC students, as stated in the original demands delivered to this board on January 9. For example, rather than fund punitive discipline, we need to see an investment in restorative justice practices in our schools. Instead of enabling the harm brought about by the presence of SROs, we need to provide holistic health services. Removing SROs is a crucial first step in the process of ending inherently harmful systemic policing in our schools. We expect that as a doctor who cares about the mental health of the district's students, that you'll prioritize and support the well-being of students of color and students with disabilities and make the right decision. The communities of Salem, Kaiser, and broader Oregon are paying attention to see if the Salem Kaiser School District truly aligns with its equity and social justice ideals. So please remove SROs and reinvest those funds as I've described. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller? I believe we have two more callers, right?
Yes, that sounds right. Elizabeth is next, and Elizabeth, you're on the line.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Elizabeth and I live in Kaiser. I support the consistent call to remove SROs from our school district. This is a bare minimum anti-racist, pro-student, and role-holding movement. I'm sorry? There is precedent, there is research, there are students and families, too many students and families, Black, Brown, Indigenous, who can and have repeatedly told you, informed you, educated you about the violence of the current system, which has been named for you in the school-to-prison pipeline. The first hugely impactful thing you have the power to do to reduce the violence of white supremacy in our school system is to remove SROs and their contracts. To actually act on all the listening, you've been privileged to do. Dr. Satya Shandragiri, you have claimed over and over to be anti-violence, including verbal violence and pro-mental health, but you have not taken a single action to lessen the harm you are causing in your current position of power. You use and allow your peers in this space to use violent language every meeting. You said that you want the need for detention centers and, or student detention, or youth detention centers and SROs to go away. What need? What is it that you think justifies the violence of the school-to-prison pipeline? What are you waiting on to change before you end the violence SROs cause? The evidence is clear. The only reason we need SROs is to maintain the violent, white supremacist classes ableist system they uphold. You think that students need to learn to climb their ladder. Author, poet, anti-racist educator Sonia Renee Taylor explains that there shouldn't be a ladder. Our students demand there shouldn't be a ladder. What you see as a ladder, our students experience as white supremacy, and all evidence that exists indicates that what is actually needed is for you and your peers to use your power to fix the inequities the ladder represents. This non-voting student member is a great idea and all, but y'all hear multiple students every time you offer time for testimony. If you won't listen to them now, why should any of our students expect that having a chair at your table will change anything? Last meeting, the white supremacy of this school board was so blatant, and I want to call out just some behaviors. As long as you're unwilling to recognize the specific and distinct experiences that different students have in our district, you are ignoring and purposely remaining ignorant of the ways our school district works only for some students and is violent towards others. You all all but said all lives matter multiple times last week. This is a denial of systemic racism, and this is racist. Marty Han denied having any connection to the Confederate flag. I have evidence that this is a complete lie. You know a lot of people who love that hate symbol, Han. You all claim you are suffering under unfair negative assumptions. I've been listening to you all talk very closely for a long while now, if you add up to ours, and I've seen what you all accept and associate with. Please stop creating new structures without addressing the current violent structure that is white supremacy in our school district. Please stop pretending you do not have access to your community's voices, to students' voices. You hear them constantly. You just haven't taken action. Step one, end the SRO contract.
Thank you very much, Erin. We have, what, two more or one more caller?
Currently, there's just one more. There's a few more that have signed up who have not yet called in, but Chris, I'm trying to get to unmute. All right, Chris, you are live.
Chris, welcome, please.
I see that he has unmuted, so try, Chris, Chris, yes, you're live. Please go ahead with your first and last name and begin.
Chris, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead, Chris. We are waiting for you.
Sorry about that. Chris Tarver. It's been a while since I've spoken for the board, so please bear with me. Try to be quick. I know you guys have been here all night. I appreciate you sticking around. Regarding the SROs in schools, I myself have had some firsthand, firsthand experiences involving SROs here in the Salem Kaiser Schools. Some have been good, most have been bad. I know several students who have had negative experiences. I've known firsthand and have seen firsthand the damage that has been done by the SRO's involvement. And I just want to read something real quickly to you. You guys came up with the Safe and Welcoming Schools thing here a while back. And Salem Kaiser Public Schools is committed to providing safe and welcoming spaces where all students are able to focus on their education, securing the knowledge that the district will support their safety and well-being while providing access and opportunity to high-quality education. What I'm hearing from students and from folks about the SRO situation is the ones that don't want them there is a safety issue. It's a mental health issue. It, it, it gives them the feeling of fear. I don't know if any of you have had a lot of experiences with police. Unfortunately, I've had a few, and I know that although I, I'm willing to take responsibility for my actions, sometimes I didn't have to do anything for a negative action to be taking place. A lot of these kids, all they've seen is negative from the police. And now they have a police officer with a loaded weapon, sometimes standing right there in their school, not knowing if that police officer is racist, like so many of the other police officers that we see every day, all day, on videos and TV. I can't help but feel like with the information that's out there, other cities have gone away from the SRO programs. Minneapolis, Think Wall, Oakland, communities that have gone away from SROs, and they're having, are seeing not really any change as far as the safety of the students overall. And I think that's because, you know, when we're talking about schools of the predominantly white suburban schools, those SROs, you know, they're trying to protect those kids from intruders. But schools with predominantly students of color, low-income students, those SROs are thinking more about a threat that the student is, and not so much of a threat from the outside. Therefore, I feel like SROs should probably not be involved in schools. Sounds like I'm not alone, and I hope you guys really take a moment to consider things and come up with the right responsible choice. And just in closing, I just want to say that I really appreciate Superintendent Perry for sending out these buses and folks to help with the forest fires in the canyon. I know Director Bethel, and I know Director Lippold personally. We're also involved volunteering and helping out with people that were displaced from their homes and getting supplies and donations, and I really want to say thank you. I'm currently living in Mill City, so which explains why you haven't seen me in a while. But I just want to say I appreciate that, and I appreciate your hard work. And I know this is a conversation that is very tough to have. You weren't prepared to have it, probably, and do you want to have it? You know, maybe, maybe not. However, involving race, involving politics, religion, those are hot-button topics. People are going to be fiery about it, and especially if they feel like it hasn't been heard for such a long time. You know, I hope you'll stick in, stay the course, listen, and just react and give these folks something. They want action. They want to see results, and they need to see it. They need to see it. They deserve to see it. And I hope that the construction at McKay High School is looking beautiful. I didn't see a wrestling room in the blueprint, so I might have to sign up for the next board meeting to make some comment on that. Otherwise, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your work, and stay in there, stay in there. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. You know, I appreciate all the comments, and you be safe, I hope. You know, first of all, you know, it's hard to stay so late to give us comments, but the fact that you stayed up so late, we appreciate. Now, I believe we have one video. Is that right, Erin?
Yes, we have one video on a non-agenda item.
Okay, it's a short video. We can, let's see that, and then we'll kind of quickly go.
Get that queued up.
All right, please.
Hi, my name is Laura Vigland, and I'm an employer of the Salem Kaiser Public Schools. I wanted to call and say that I support Latinos, Unidos Siempre in their call for the removal of SROs from our schools in order to build a more equitable future for our students of color. We need to listen to and work with these student advocates in order to fix the issues of systemic racism that impact our schools. It is simply a fact that students of color have lower graduation rates and often do not feel welcome or safe in our schools. We cannot pretend that this is an issue we can push to a later time. This impacts our students now, so the time to act is now.
Well, thank you very much. With that, we end the public comments for non-agenda items. You know, I just want to quickly see if our board members have any one or two board report. You know, board members have also been working very hard, so I just want to make sure our board members have a chance. So let's start with Vice Chair Bethel.
Actually, I just wanted to make a friendly suggestion that we all send our reports to Alice to share with each other. It's pretty late, and Superintendent Perry has something that she wanted to share, so if that's possible.
If that's okay with others, I'm okay with it.
Session as well.
Just wanted to make a comment, and I agree with that. Is that okay for me? Go ahead.
No, 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 no. I just wanted to make sure our board members have an opportunity to not only comment and share, so I don't want to overrule anybody, please.
Right, and I was going to ask some questions, some big concerns that some parents have and what's going on in our district, but because of the late hour, I will submit those by email, and I just want those parents to know I did not forget, and it will get to the district.
Director Hyatt, if you want to ask, please ask those questions. It's okay, because I don't want our parents to feel that their voices have been drowned because you did not ask.
I appreciate it, but I feel kind of guilty doing it, because probably the other board members aren't going to get to. So I thank you, Chair, but I will, I will send it by email to the superintendent and to leadership to share out.
Yeah, and please make it a point at the next board meeting, you will make sure, because I want the public to feel acknowledged, yeah. Superintendent Perry, you have anything to add?
No, I would think it would be great if we could get to executive session.
Very well. Thank you very much. And the board will now meet an executive session under the following Oregon revised statutes, ORS 192.6602D, to conduct deliberations with person designated to carry on labor negotiation. The board will now meet an executive session to conduct deliberation. Representatives of the news media are allowed to attend executive sessions except for those sessions held in regard to expulsion. All other audience members are excluded from the executive sessions. The presidency of the news media is specifically directed not to report on any deliberation during executive sessions except to state the general subject of the session as listed on the agenda. No recording of executive session is allowed without express permission from the board. The public session of the board meeting has concluded. The meeting will not reconvene following executive session, and no further board business will be conducted following adjournment of the executive session. Board members, please exit this meeting and log into your separate link you have provided specifically for the session. Good night.